All right, looks like everybody's here. And if I can remind everybody, just keep your cameras on tonight throughout the meeting. That way I can see when you have questions and whatnot. So we'll go ahead and get the pre-meeting started with CATSI update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. It's good to be with you tonight as a part of our formal discussion this evening. You will be considering a renewal of the contract with CATSI as our operator of our transit system. We wanted to be sure that you may not have any, that if you had any questions tonight, we could deal with those in a pre-meeting setting. Or if you, you know, needed more information or whatever pursuant to your review of the materials, we would be able to help deal with that as well. So if I could get Mayor, with your permission, Director Becker to introduce our director and be available for those questions.
That's good. Mr. Becker?
Your Honor, members of council. As you know, the city does contract with CATSI to do our transit operation, and we have been very, very pleased to have an operating transit system throughout the spring, which has allowed us through FTA to qualify for that massive, and I'm going to say very massive, $3 million CARES Act funding, which has very much helped not only our transit system, but also our general fund. And I'm going to hear from, in a minute, from the director. But I know Jeremy and I have been working very, very well over the past year with our new director. John Jones stepped on and replaced Marge Cole just about a year ago. So we have been real pleased, and he's done a wonderful job, and I want to do some of the updates so you'll know what we have in the year ahead of us. So John Jones, the executive director.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of council, City Manager. So yeah, I've been here just a little bit over a year. Actually took over full control of the system on the 14th of June when Marge retired. There are certain aspects of it I'd like not to repeat, the last three months especially. But, you know, moving forward, we have a solid foundation here. Marge Cole did some very good work over the 40 years she was with us in running the system. We have a solid customer base with, with good users. We have a good reputation for providing quality service to the citizens of Casper and the surrounding communities. Moving forward, we need to be certain that we continue to fund it and sustain it and work within the resources that we have to expand it when that becomes necessary. Right now, we have a couple of project, well, more than a couple of projects that are going to be coming up in the coming year. As Director Becker mentioned, the CARES funding was really good for us. We're going to be able to do, advance some capital projects that we had sort of pushed out and maybe even put on hold. We're going to do a, working with the MPO, we're going to do a transit development plan to guide our planning efforts for the next five to six years. That'll be coming down the pike fairly soon, hopefully as soon as we get through this little pandemic operation that we're running right now. Then moving forward after that with the capital, and I know that you had some questions on this way back when it happened, we're replacing an old four-wheel-drive van that we had for years and years and years. It was 19 years old. Wasn't so much the miles that we're getting it, but as they say, it isn't, they usually say it isn't the age, it's the mileage. In this case, it wasn't the mileage, it was the age. So that is a capital grant that's, that's going to be approved, and we're going to be able to purchase that van before winter, a new all-wheel-drive van with a wheelchair lift and everything. We're going to involve and get involved with some intelligent transportation projects. We're going to get a grant to put a ABL system on our buses so that not only will we know where they are, but our customers, through the use of a phone app, will be able to see where they are in relation to what bus stop they are at, or if it's a demand-responsive customer, they'll know when that bus is five minutes away, so they'll be ready and out there. It's going to promote efficiencies in the system. It's going to provide us with a great data stream to do future planning efforts. You know, we'll, we'll be able to use it for investigative purposes if we have an incident, but primarily it's a customer-facing tool that they will be able to use to see where our buses are and, and so that they, they know when they're coming and where they need to be at to, to pick up the bus. And beyond that, you know, it will give us data about where people are boarding buses so that we can, you know, complete, sort of complete the loop on the planning and know that we're providing the services where they're necessary and needed. Price tag on it isn't really all that expensive either. It's, it's probably going to be only around $230,000 of those capital CARES dollars that we have. And if the grant gets approved and we can get into the bid cycle with it, we should probably have it up and running sometime early next year. Along with that, we are also going to introduce mobile data terminals into our door-to-door buses, where now a driver calls in his mileage, or he has to use a phone to call a customer, he'll be able to use the computer on the bus to tell dispatch what he needs and to put that information in in real time. We'll have more accurate, real-time passenger counts. We won't be waiting until the next day, or in the case of over a weekend, a couple of days, to compile our information. It will automatically appear in the data system so that we can look at it right away. And again, not a terrific price tag on that, and it would update our current software. All this is going to kind of bring us into the 21st century. It's also going to be a scalable system. So if we decide we need to add more passenger information systems later on down the road, it won't be difficult to do that at all. Things like enunciators and, and control for the signage that's on the front of the buses. We also, as part of this COVID pandemic, there's been a big push in the industry to go to contactless fare, and we have the ability with these dollars for a very low cost to put in what are called validator units that are about the size of a smartphone. We would still have the mechanical fare box on for those people that, that need to pay money, that don't have a, a cell phone, or, or don't have the ability to get to the station to get a smart card. But these things would take the place of the tokens. They would also give us accurate passenger counts, accurate boarding locations, and they could be loadable very easily and reloadable. And the beauty of them is, is, you know, we would get rid of all those tokens and we would get all this information with them. And again, the price tag on that system is very low, and it would end a lot of the handling that we do of cash and things. They would buy the, the pass either online, or they would come into the office and have it loaded, and it would be, instead of a monthly pass, and we get this mad rush right at the first of the month or the end of the last month to buy a pass that's good for that month, it would be good for 30 days anytime. They would buy it, and it wouldn't start to toll until they pass it across the validator, and then the 30 days would start to toll. So they wouldn't be rushing in right at the first or last of the month to buy it. They could buy it anytime. Those are just some projects that we, that we wanted to, to get going on the intelligent transportation side. Ridership in 2020 has been down, obviously, because of this, this pandemic, but I was surprised to find out when I did some projections today that the ridership on the bus, despite everything, is going to be up 2%. That's our projection right now. It was scheduled to be up, or projected to be up almost 20% before the pandemic hit, but our ridership has hold, held steady around 350 to 425 a day ever since this pandemic started. People still needed to get to essential jobs, and they were riding the buses. So I can't thank council, the MPO, and others around the city and the communities enough for supporting us throughout this thing and saying, yes, you know, we're going to help you with your public relations, and we want you to continue to operate. We put in massive disinfection and decontamination protocols nightly, during the day, and over the weekend, to make sure that none of the disease, you know, proliferated and went through the system and got onto the buses. Right now, we have no cases that are contact traced back to the transit system. Those things unfortunately have not come without a cost. And two, through April 30th, we spent some $40,000 on additional salaries and cleaning products and additional things that, and PPE and things that we did to the buses to make sure that this didn't proliferate. Unfortunately, some of those costs are going to end up in a future budget because, as, as the phrase goes, those are going to be the new normal moving forward. The disinfection protocols, the decontamination protocols, I'm afraid are going to have to contend, we're going to have to contend with those costs long after this is over. But again, you know, I can't thank this council, the City Manager's Office, the MPO, and the other communities enough for all their assistance in getting us, helping us get through this. It's to your credit. Again, we just signed the, the facility and bus lease agreements for the next two years and the service agreement for the, the coming year that you're willing to act on tonight. We appreciate that the agreement sustains our operating through the next year and allows us to do these capital projects. And again, you know, thank you for your support of that moving forward. Few other things that we did, we, we fully support your build grant. We provided a letter of support for that, that Midwest Avenue reconstruction is very important, I noted, to the Casper area. It's going to have a transit element to it, and I think it's going to be a real nice amenity on that side of the city, looking forward to it. And just a few other administrative matters, we have updated completely our personnel manual with the assistance of the Employers Council in Denver. That was included in our membership with them. So that will be issued this month before the fiscal year starts out. And we also have signed off on and sent over to the MPO for their signature, the Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan, that's a mouthful, that we have to have by FTA mandate in effect on the 1st of July. That was done on our behalf by YDOT, and I worked with the MPO on, on some of the stuff, and the HGR Consulting Group did most of the work, and it's a really fine product. And that will be signed off on and put into effect by July 1st. And again, you know, that was at no cost to us. So again, thank you all for your support for the past year. This has been quite an adventure, especially these last three months. Thank you for your support throughout this pandemic. Can't say enough about how this city and the communities around it work together to, and have worked together throughout this difficult time. Anybody have any questions for me?
Any council members have questions or comments? Councilman Powell.
Sorry, a little slow to the microphone. You know, John, our tendency is to, is to deal with the matter and then go on to the next thing. I don't know that we ever really got any feedback about how the route changes worked because there was some controversy about all of that. Were you satisfied with how that all played out, and did people adjust to those changes?
Based on our ridership projections on those routes that we did change, they did adjust very well to those changes because there, you know, there were changes to green and yellow. There was a slight downturn early on in yellow, but that ridership has come back, and green has consistently performed as probably the second-best route in the system. The blue route, as you know, that goes from downtown out to the east side and its terminuses at Walmart is our most heavily-used route, but yellow and green kind of vie for second place, but green in the north, where there were some relatively large changes to that route when we did those changes, that, that route is consistently in second place, and the folks that are using these routes have adapted well. So they, all in all, it's been positive. Our ridership, again, we, we were headed for a record year before all this disease started. It was really disheartening when it all came down.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Did you have?
No, Mr. Mayor, the clerk just asked me to change this camera.
Oh, okay. Okay, are we good with that? All right. We'll move on to text amendment to Chapter 8.40, litter control. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had the opportunity to visit with some of the waste haulers over the last week or so, and together came up with an opportunity to consider an amendment that might more closely align with the concerns that, in dealing with the concerns that the haulers had worries about, and still accomplish the things that we think will help to control litter on construction sites and so forth. If I could have the attorney kind of briefly describe that language for us to be sure that if, if you have questions along those lines, ultimately what we would need to know is if the amendment language is acceptable and if indeed we can consider that for tonight's third reading.
There were a couple of changes here. The first, basically just a clarification update with respect to paragraph A, at or originating from the site. So it makes it just a little bit more clear and a little bit more pointed. So I think that's just a wording correction and technical in that regard. And then the, the second one, basically, again, what we're talking about here is for the purpose of eliminating wind-blown debris and litter, and that's a new provision, but it really kind of sets the, the essence of why I think Mr. Toupes and some of the neighbors in the eastern part of the city came to the council and were looking for this particular amendment. And so this would, and with just a very simple phrase, for the purpose of eliminating and containing wind-blown debris and litter, sums up kind of the essence of it. So that's a reason for doing this, and it also then, I think, provides the direction to code enforcement as to why they're doing this. And while they may be more stringent on a wind-blown day, then if, if they're out there and people are working hard, but there's no wind, they probably don't have to open and close the container quite so often. They then went and they said at least one container, so they don't have to have all containers, and therefore the size of the job would make a difference, that the type of work that they're doing on the job at any particular time would control how many containers they needed to have. If they're working with a lot of insulation, obviously you're going to have a lot of wind-blown type of debris, whereas if you're pouring concrete, you're probably not going to have near so much debris that you need to be attentive to, at least wind-blown debris at that point. And so with this, the, the agency CD, Community Development, and the Building Department, and I think in conjunction even with Solid Waste, got together along with some of the, the refuge haulers, and decided that this language seemed to be a good fit for what was intended by everyone and doable. And then there were some additional, I think there were two additional possible containers that they wanted to reference and include in the reference to the ordinance, and then those would be back on the subsequent pages behind the, the actual wording. And with that, I think is, is the reason for the ordinance and the reason for these changes, and it all kind of comes together quite nicely in this particular amendment.
Do you have anything further, Mr. Mayor?
So, so, Mr. Mayor, the question that lies before the council at this point would be whether or not that amendment would be acceptable, and if so, whether or not it's appropriate to consider on the floor as a, as a potential addition.
So I guess if I could maybe sum it up from our discussions, the, so the amendment being made is that if you had wind-blown debris, which could be insulation, paper products, whatever it might be, you would have to have a cover over the dumpster or have a dumpster with a lid on it. Could be the portable, or the smaller units that, that you could pick up that have the plastic lids on them. But if it's not wind-blown debris, if it could be construction material, sheet rock, things like that that wouldn't blow, then you would not be required to have a lid or a cover on the dumpster. Is that correct?
I think if you could define it that clearly, I think that's exactly right. Now, obviously, at times you're going to have multiple operations going on at one time, and of course, then that's when it goes down to, well, you might have to have four containers out there, at least one of which would be for wind-blown debris. But, but otherwise, I, I think that, that your, your premise is correct. The, the paragraph B does make a reference that at least one site shall be available, or at least one collections, refuge container would be available with a cover at all times. So even if it were just concrete, I suppose if there is such an operation where you wouldn't have any type of wind-blown debris at a site, you may have to have one, at least one with a cover there. But if you had five, you may still only have to have that one with a cover. It's not like you have to have all five with a cover.
Any question or comments from council? Councilman Hopkins, and I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things I, you know, I've looked at this, and I've been kind of watching the state office building build, and I enjoy watching things being built, but one of the things that seems to be a common denominator here with the whole issue of wind-blown trash is it gets out of a container. And perhaps we might want to look at a different tactic where we, when we do a roll-off, it comes with a wind-blown container. The roll-off would go inside of this relatively large ark that is with plastic over it, or, you know, vented plastic, snow fence, whatever you want to call it. And so when you rent, when you rent a roll-off, it comes with this container. You always point it towards southwest, and that container is tied to the container with just a little cable. I mean, the guys that bring in the roll-off, they go in and they have to hook up a cable and do this and do that. So all you do is have a couple of cables, and it's, it's not a solution that I've seen before, but I, I do know that we spend a great deal of money on wind-blown trash at the landfill, and that's been our best solution. It's to have a fence that contains some of the stuff. So if we make, our deal is that you're going to have to have a container that has a over container, if you will, that's relatively lightweight, has no gates to put up or down, it rolls on and rolls off, and I understand it would have to be like 12 foot 6 by 8 foot 6, but they could be assembled on-site. And that's just a possibility that we might want to consider if this becomes a big deal. But other than that, I support where we're going right now, but that really is the solution, is to have it contained. We do the same thing at the landfill, except on a much bigger scale. Thank you.
Councilman Huber.
I just want to look at the text. I haven't seen the text of this proposed amendment. This sounds like a good idea to me, but I just want to read this.
Okay. Well, Councilman Huber's looking at that. If we're going down the road of saying that if you don't have any wind-blown items within it, you wouldn't be required to have a, a cover over them, then why don't we just make it a requirement that if you have wind-blown debris, that you have to have a cover over it at that time? Because even if we, if we say you need to have a cover on a dumpster at all times, you know, at least one, it doesn't make sense. If you throw concrete blocks into it, why are we going to require that to be on-site to cover something up that's not going to blow out in the first place? I guess that's a question.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and this isn't really my area of expertise, but, but just as an effort to, to explain as I, as I understand it, you know, you don't know what's going to happen up there. And so unless you have one on-site, by the time you, you decide, oh, my gosh, here comes in the order of this, and the people are here to work on it, here the, the people are going to put the shingles on, and so here they come up and they're putting them out, and everyone's getting off their truck, we don't have a container then to put the stuff in. So if one's there, you have the, the preventative, and you know that most things are going to have a certain amount of refuge. You have at least, you know, if you're, even if you're mixing your own concrete in a small project, you're going to have your own bags of, of concrete from the, the container, basically, that need to be thrown away that would be wind-blown, even though the concrete itself wouldn't be wind-blown. So I think that was the thought process, that you want to have it there as a failsafe to make sure that this just doesn't blow around, and if somebody else pulls up to the job site, they're ready for those people.
You know, and I agree with having a dumpster there to, to put things in. I guess what I'm saying is why make it a requirement to have a cover on something if you don't have wind-blown material you're going to put in that dumpster? So if you bring a dumpster up and you're going to throw plywood or something, you know, something that's just not going to blow away, why, why would we require them to have a, a cover? And it seems more so to me that this would, could all be simplified by saying, if you're going to have wind-blown material within a dumpster, you need to cover it, and you need to have a cover on it. And if you don't, then you get a citation for not, for not covering it. But other than that, it, I mean, that just seems to simplify. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I think that's exactly what we're aiming for. In, in the dumpster that doesn't have the wind-blown material, it would be my expectation that that would not require a cover. On the contrary, for the container that would be designated for the wind-blown material, that would be the one that would require the, the lid or a cover, or whatever the case may be. So I think we're saying the same thing, if I understand you correctly.
Yeah, all, all I'm saying is if, you know, I'll take it from personal experience. If I asked to have a dumpster dropped, dropped off at a job site, and I fill that dumpster up, and I know, and it could be a full-size dumpster, but I know it has wind-blown material within that dumpster, then I would be required to throw a cover over that and make sure it's covered. If I'm not throwing away any wind-blown material that is just heavy material that's not going to be blown out of there, then why would I be required to put a, a cover on that? It just, it makes sense to me that we cover up the things that could blow away and become a problem down the road. Councilman Huber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And exactly what you're talking about there, Mr. Mayor, is, is part of why I wanted to look at the, the text of this. I'm wondering if in here where it says, for the purpose of eliminating and containing wind-blown debris and litter, if we were to add in language that would say, and at construction sites where wind-blown material may be generated, then the owner, agent, or contractor shall have and maintain on the site at least one container with a cover in that. Would that additional language that I just spoke about, would that clarify and help, or is it going to make things more unclear and unhelpful?
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I, I think that, that that further emphasizes the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish. Wind-blown material must be kept in a lidded, covered container, and that's, that's the whole idea.
Well, but again, I would ask the question, does, does anybody here think that that suggested additional language helps any, or is it just more verbiage?
I, I think it could be helpful.
Yeah, I, yeah, I personally just think that simplifying it and saying that if you have wind-blown material, you have to have a cover. It doesn't matter what kind of dumpster it is. If you're going to have it, you have to have a cover. Simple as that. So I think the idea behind it is we're trying to keep trash from blowing down the road, and if you're a responsible contractor or homeowner, or whoever it might be that's using a dumpster, and you know that there's a possibility of things blowing out of there, then you should make sure that you should. then you should make sure, you should, by all means, keep that from happening. And if that means putting a cover on it, then you need to put a cover on at that time. But that doesn't mean that it, you know, if you're throwing things out there that are not going to be wind-blown, then why would you, why would you need one?
Well, Mr. Mayor, would, and I know that, you know, wordsmithing things a little bit on the fly is always tough. But would it make this more clear if we struck out for the purpose of eliminating and containing, just put in there the language that you just said, if there is a potential for wind-blown material, then there will be a, a covered thing?
Be required.
Does that get the job done that we're all talking about?
I think it simplifies it. I think, Councilman Kathy?
You know, I hate to go back to my initial statement when this first came up and my initial amendment, but my initial amendment and statement stated that the dumpster should maintain to prevent wind-blown material, which basically, and I use the same argument, Mr. Mayor, that you're using right now, that you don't have to wind up covering a dumpster that has material in it that doesn't blow away. So therefore, you would not need a cover. But that was all fufu. So I, I guess I'm getting a little frustrated with this continuation of, we're back to where we started about three weeks ago.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Huber.
With the greatest of respect for Councilman Kathy, I don't think that we are back to where we started a few weeks ago, because I think that if we, if we enact something with the language that you suggested, which I have written down here and could potentially read, "If there is a potential for wind-blown debris and litter, then the owner, agent, contractor shall maintain at least one container with a cover." And I think that that's accomplishing what all we want to accomplish. If you're throwing big old hunks of lumber into something that they're not going to blow away anyway, that's different than if you're throwing pieces of plywood that might go flying and become a projectile. And I think, you know, if, if Mr. Henley thinks that that would cover it.
Is he good with?
I'd, I'd probably be interested in making that as an amendment to this amendment here. And I'll give you back your copy of this one, Henry.
Yeah, you want to hang on to that, and then if you...
Okay.
Councilman Bates.
Are we going to define what, when, what could be wind-blown items? Because you can take a piece of plywood, throw it in there, think that it's having enough, drive down the road, and the wind just catches it right, and it's, it's out. Or a metal shed, as we saw pictures of a metal shed from a neighbor's yard in an alleyway, that you put that in there, and the wind just grabs it right, but they thought it was having enough. So are we going to define what that is, or leave it up to the contractors or business to decide what they feel is wind-blown or not?
Well, I'll take that one. I, you know, I think that's up to the, the individual themselves. They know what, what they're putting in a dumpster, and whether or not our Wyoming winds are going to pick it up and, and send it down the road. So, you know, if the wind's going to be blowing, it's going to be blowing 90 miles an hour, and it's potential of blowing plywood out of a, out of a container, probably out of a container with a lid. I mean, that's just common sense. I don't think you can put a definition on it, saying it has to weigh X amount of pounds in order to be non-wind-blown material. So... Any other questions or comments? Okay. Anything else we need on that, Mr. Manager? Okay. So we'll move on to agenda review. I know we're behind on time, but did you have anything else you need to add on the agenda review, or anything else before we start tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I'm good.
Anybody else have anything on agenda review before we begin? Okay. I now call the June 2nd, 2020 Regular Council Meeting to order. For those of you that will be calling in to speak with council tonight, please mute or turn off YouTube or TV broadcast when we contact you. It is hard to hear callers over the sound, and there is a delay in both these systems. Please call the roll.
Actually, Mayor, I believe everyone's present. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I...
Mr. Mayor, I would just want to note that looking, I'm off to the side, being socially distanced, I'm off to the side of the picture that very handsomely portrays you and Councilman Pacheco.
So Councilman Huber is here. It's just the angle of the camera tonight won't allow him to be seen. So, but he's right, right there. Okay. Council meetings are televised, could be viewed on Cable Channel 192. Council meetings are also streamed live on YouTube, and links to previous meetings are available on our webpage. Public comment will be taken by telephone during the appropriate parts of the meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve by-minute action the minutes of the May 19th, 2020 Regular Council Meeting, as published in the Casper Star Tribune on May 28th, 2020.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco.
Second.
Second by Councilman Huber. Any amendments? Please call the roll and record the vote.
Councilman Kathy.
Aye.
Councilman Powell.
Aye.
Councilman Bates. Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye.
Mayor Freel.
Aye.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve by-minute action to June 2nd, 2020 Bills and Claims is audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Huber.
Second.
Second by Councilman Pacheco. Any abstentions? Please call the roll and record the vote.
Councilman Kathy.
Aye.
Councilman Powell.
Aye.
Councilman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye.
Mayor Freel.
Aye.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Mr. City Manager, do we have the bright spots? Steve Mogan here?
Mr. Mayor, I think we can proceed, even though I'm not sure that Mr. Mogan might be with us.
Okay.
We are getting Mr. Mogan on the phone right now.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mogan.
Hello, how are you?
Good, good. We are pleased to welcome Steve Mogan of 307 First, a Wyoming nonprofit that focuses on supporting Wyoming-owned businesses. 307 First raises awareness about the support of local businesses and people to ensure Wyoming money stays local to fuel our local economy. I'm pleased to proclaim June as 307 First Month, and I would like to share this proclamation now. I'm going to read a proclamation that says, "Whereas the City of Casper is committed to supporting the success and strength of our local and state economy, and encourages the efforts of our local business owners, and whereas local businesses are the backbone of our economy and are integral to the growth and longevity of our community, and whereas the strength of our local business is dependent on the patronage of the community, and whereas buying from locally-owned businesses not only helps to provide earnings to the employees of that business, the money spent locally is used to hire other businesses, such as suppliers, auto and equipment dealers, and contractors, and whereas all these factors together create what's called a multiplier effect, meaning that each dollar spent in a local store brings as much as $3.50 into the local economy. And whereas backing local business supports critical infrastructure within our communities through the generation of sales tax revenue, making our Wyoming communities a great place to live, work, and play. Now, therefore, I, Stephen K. Freel, Mayor of the City of Casper, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2020 as 307 First Month in Casper, and encourage everyone to live, love, and buy Wyoming." Mr. Mogan, I'm going to turn it over to you now, if you have anything you'd like to tell us about 307 First, and I'll let you take it from here.
You have, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the proclamation, giving 307 First the recognition. You really said it all. It's just a nonprofit. We try to raise awareness in keeping dollars local, and we appreciate Casper's commitment to that.
All right. Thank you, sir. And thank you, thank you for, thank you for visiting with us.
Right.
Okay. All right. So those interested in learning more about 307 First, visit 307first.com.
All right. Thank you, both guys.
Okay. Now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we ask the following: to please state your name and address. Direct all questions, comments to the mayor and the mayor only. No personal attacks on staff or council will be tolerated. Council will not respond to personnel matters. These will be referred to the city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by council members. Presentations will be limited to five minutes, and duplication of speakers will not be allowed, nor will time extensions be permitted. When calling in, please mute or turn off YouTube or TV broadcast. It is hard to hear callers over the sound, and there is a delay in both these systems. The public comment phone number is area code 307-235-7568. City Clerk Tremmel, do we have any calls?
Your Honor, I have a caller on the line.
Okay.
That's okay. My name is Stacy Fagerstone. I live at 6654 Westland Road here in Casper. And I am calling to discuss the matter of the council deciding to keep these outdoor swimming pools closed this summer. This concerns me. I think our kids have had enough taken from them due to COVID, which is no fault of your guys' of course. But the parade has been canceled, Lemonade Day was canceled, the fair's been canceled, Nick Fest, Bear Trap, and who knows what else will be canceled because of COVID, which again, is not your guys' fault. But now their pools, their summer fun is even more taken away. They had their end-of-year fund taken away because schools got closed. So they've been, you know, isolated, you know, self-quarantining, all of that kind of stuff. And now we're taking away their pools. And it's my understanding, it's not because of COVID that the pools are being taken away. It's because it's going to cost, or save the city 107,000 some odd dollars for the summer. And while I can appreciate, you know, the, the budget crunch and everything, I don't think another thing should be taken from our, from our kids. I think they, this is something they look forward to, is the pools. They can't just go down to the river. They can't just go out to the lake and have fun. The pools are a source of entertainment for these kids, and I think that you guys need to reconsider that. I think 107,000 can be taken, you know, from something else. Or, you know, with the size of the budget, you know, I realize 107,000 is 107,000, but you're talking about our kids here, and entertainment for our kids. And I think you guys need to take that into consideration a little bit more. And that is all I have to say.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? Vice Mayor Lutz?
And I'm probably going to need Carter's help on this. Is our recreational pools actually cleared by the state health officer at this point?
So Vice Mayor, Carter actually stepped out of the room just for a moment. But as far as being cleared, part of the problem right now, and I think we're going to discuss this a little later in council, but part of the problem right now with the pools is we have not been cleared. Pools can be open, but pools cannot, they are limited to one person per lane. So if you took a pool and you divided it up into the amount of lanes, you'd probably be able to get four to six kids in there. I, in, in a pre-meeting, and I want to bring this up in a roundtable and have this discussion tonight, we have heard a lot from people upset about the pools not being reopened. The actual cost savings that we would have, there is a potential that we could, I think we were looking at the splash pad in North, Marion Kriener Splash Pad, the actual aquatic center itself, the pools there, and Mike Cedar. If we opened those up, we would still be able to save some money by doing that. And so we want to have that discussion tonight. But with the understanding that if we are to open those pools up, we will not open those up until the state health orders would allow us to open them fully. Because right now, it absolutely makes no sense budgetary-wise. And, and even, you'd have kids standing out in a parking lot waiting for somebody, you know, one kid to get out of the pool while the next one gets in, because we just cannot accommodate more than a certain amount of people right now. So if, or when the time comes that we're able to open those up further, then I think that we need to have that discussion of, as whether we're willing to move forward on, on those three locations. But I think in, Carter might be able to answer on this here in just a second. But with those three locations being opened up, we'd still, it wouldn't be as big of a, a hit for, obviously, we're in debt. We're in debt big time, and we're trying to get ourselves out of that. But we're hearing what people are saying, and we could open those three locations up relatively easy, I would assume. Mr. City Manager, we're discussing the three locations to open up, and I don't know if you wanted to add to that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm sorry.
We still, we still have a caller on. But I'm letting the manager talk to us also about this, ma'am. Just a moment.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I certainly believe that a compromised position can be taken. It, it, you know, most certainly wouldn't yield the amount of savings that we were hoping. And furthermore, I think we have to be very careful as it relates to what the orders would direct. And, and so I would suggest that if we do take that position, it really should be contingent upon orders being supportive of a service of that nature.
Okay. Councilman Pacheco.
This is for the, a question for the city manager. Do you think there's a cutoff? I mean, we know the city or the state orders. I mean, if it comes in, you know, late Ju, July, or wherever, is there a cutoff that we would say, look, we still haven't gotten the orders? Or then all of a sudden, at the end of July, it does open, we're able to accommodate a larger group? Is there still, is there a cutoff that we would look at to say it's still not even feasible?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Pacheco, that's a, that's a great question. The, intuitively, that, that's a really important piece to be aware of as it relates to being able to gear up for an opening. As you know, orders come out, and, and we don't get a lot of heads up as to what they might mean, or say, or allow. And so the, the, the clock would start ticking, if you will, in terms of the amount of summer that we can take advantage of, as well as the time by which we would need to gear up for lifeguards to be brought on, and, and so on. So yes, I do think there would be kind of a delineation... So yes, I do think there would be kind of a delineation that would make, you know, less and less sense as we get further and further into the summer. But we can give you a closer analysis of what that would look like, if that would help the council in this discussion, and, and we could probably have that prepared for the next time we get together.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I can tell you that there are beaches at both Pathfinder and Alkova that while they were pretty crowded last weekend, we don't have the issues of having 200 kids in a small pool. It's, it's along the beach, and I know our great grandson was playing in Alkova Lake last weekend, and I'm thinking it's a little cold for me, but they're, they're doing that out there, and I know that's not the same as having a pool in town, but the bottom line is that our pools in town is just terribly hard to maintain separation, and, and I support the direction we're headed, but I also understand that we also have a cutoff date that if you only have two weeks of warm weather left, it, it makes no sense to ever open them. So I, I understand that it's a difficult issue, but I've also bought a little four-foot diameter pool to put in my backyard for my great grandson, so that's an option too. We'll run through those, thank you.
Councilman Bates.
Thank you Mayor, and I actually looked up and I saw my own question, answered my own question, because I forget about the six-foot distance, but I saw that the, May 27th, the governor allowed outdoor gatherings of 250 people for sporting events, rodeos, other events will be permitted to 250 spectators and audience and so forth. And so I don't usually see 250 people in, in any of our swimming pools normally, so, but I get, I forget about the six-foot distance, but I am in support of opening up our pools as many as we can without hurting our budget extremely bad, so I just wanted to state that.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions or comments for the caller? Councilman Huber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make the general comment that I, I think there's a lot of people out there that think that the primary thing driving the potential for closing the pools this summer is budget cuts. While our budget is very tight and everything, I think it's really important that people know that as of right now, even if we were to say, we want, we're gonna open these things up and away we go, and, you know, and no matter what the budget is, we can't do that because of the state health department limits on this, and there is nothing that the city of Casper can do about that. And so, you know, we are confined by what those state health department orders dictate, and that's what we're all just stuck with. It's not, at this point, it's really not a budget matter, it's, we couldn't do it if we wanted to, even if we had all the money in the world.
Okay, any other questions for the caller? Okay ma'am, council doesn't have any other questions for you, and I hope they answer your questions, we.
Hello?
Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, our council members do not have any further questions for you unless you had something else to add, but I hope we were able to answer your questions.
I just do, so the pool, the governor limiting, or opening it up now to 250 people, because the CDC has put out a statement that it cannot be transmitted by the pool, by, because of all the bromine, all the chemicals and everything, so the 200, opening things up to the 250 people that the governor has done effective June 1st, doesn't supersede that?
Uh, no.
I mean, they could all gather downtown, 250 people, but, and you'd get it more there than you would in a pool because of all the chemicals, according to the CDC.
So ma'am, if, first of all, the CDC is not, the governor does not, he, he's the one that puts orders in place, not the CDC, so they can have the information out that they want, but we have to go by what the governor says. The governor has given a, up to 250 gathering, but it does not include pools, there is still an order in place that says you cannot have more than one person per lane per pool. So that's what we have to go by at this time until the governor changes that. We cannot be less restrictive on the orders that are put out, we can only be more restrictive. And so we're basically waiting for the governor to release the restrictions on pools. And what we're saying tonight is that if those pools are opened back up, then we are looking at a compromise of opening a few of the pools within the city so that they can, the kids can attend swimming this, this summer, but it is all hinging on when the governor's orders change. Does that make sense?
Okay, yep, thank you.
Thank you, sorry. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. And I think we have two more callers.
Council, I have a Ms. Connie Rogers on the line for you.
Okay, good evening, Ms. Rogers.
Um, I live at 4511 Moose, and I would like to make a proposal that we use perhaps part of the one cent bill tax to begin curbside recycling here in Casper.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of Ms. Rogers? Okay, thank you ma'am.
Okay, you're welcome.
Should be one more.
Council, I have Mr. Keith Rowland on the line.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Rowland.
I'm Keith Rowland, hi, Keith Rowland, 542 South Turban. Quickly, I know this meeting's gonna go on for a long time. I requested three items to be taken off the consent agenda. I saw an amended consent agenda, rather consent agenda item on Monday, and they were taken off and they were put under resolution. Now when I see the agenda for tonight, I see them back under the consent agenda. Those three items, I think are spending items that we don't need to make at this time. I went by the Life Step Campus Parking Lot, it may have some problems, but I think those can wait till next year to spend $200,000, and the other two, I don't think need to be done this year either. I think we can save 300, over $300,000 by not doing them this year, if the economy improves, next year we can do those three items. As I strongly recommend people to look at the fact, is we only have two rigs operating in Wyoming right now, two. We have many people who are laid off in the coal industry, the two uranium mines are closed, they're not operating, I think the economy could be in terrible, terrible shape going forward for the next year, and we need to nickel and dime ourselves and not spend 200 and some odd thousand dollars on a parking lot, or money on a repainting railing, or money on a bike path.
Any questions or comments to Mr. Rowland?
Of course, are they on the consent agenda or not on the consent agenda, I should ask that question, are they on the consent agenda or not on the consent agenda?
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, they are included on the consent agenda.
Why was it amended, it was amended before they were off, now they're back on, why is that?
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, the possibility certainly exists anytime that a citizen asks for additional consideration for consent items to be had off of consent. Unless however, members of the council ask for that to happen, it, it wouldn't happen. And so in the absence of council members proposing that that be done, we retained it on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor. I was told years ago, before you were city manager, that a citizen could request anything to be taken off the consent agenda at any time, and they were off the agenda. You didn't need, because, years ago, they were very explicit, I was asking the city attorney on this also, if I request, are they off? And the city attorney at that time said, yes, they are off. I said, do I need a council member supporting this to get them off? He told me, no, different city lawyer, attorney, he told me, no, you take them off, you can get them off. It was off, now they're, the amendment was off, and now they're back on? This is ridiculous, this is why I'm glad that four of your members of the city council will no longer be there next year, this is ridiculous, goodbye.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Huber.
I, I realize that Mr. Rowland has left us, but I had understood that these were off of the consent agenda, had they not been off of the consent agenda, I would like to have a little bit more explanation on these tonight, and so I would ask that they be taken off of the consent agenda tonight and that we discuss them and listen to the merits on them, if that's, if it's not too late to do that.
Okay. Do we have any other callers?
We do not have any more callers, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please read the consent agenda items.
Establishing June 8, pardon me, June 16th, 2020 is the public hearing date for consideration of the following two items. Item 6A1A, the adoption of fiscal year 2020 budget amendment, number three, and item 6A1B, the adoption of the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget.
The chair would entertain a motion by minute action to establish the public hearing dates just read. Moved by Councilman Hopkins.
Second.
Second by Councilman Cathy, any abstentions or nay votes? Please call the rule and record the vote.
Councilman Cathy.
Aye.
Councilman Powell.
Aye.
Councilman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye.
Mayor Freel.
Aye.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance amending chapter 8.40 of the Casper Municipal Code pertaining to litter control.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Huber.
Second.
Second by Councilman Powell. Council will now listen to public comment, public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Public comment, phone number is 307-235-7568. City Clerk Tremmel, do we have any calls?
We do, we are gonna get the first caller, we have him on the line, one moment, I'll connect him. Mayor, your caller is on the line.
Good evening, Mr. Erickson.
Mr. Toops here.
Oh, okay, Mr. Toops, go ahead.
In reference to the litter control. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, and City Council, I was just called about 20 minutes ago to call into this, I assume, just to give my opinion on what you guys are working on. Can we get back to the original, the vision I have of, of these nets going over the top of dumpsters, was in the form of a tennis net or something with a big open mesh to it so that the wind doesn't catch it when they're trying to apply it or take it off. Secondly, the way I had envisioned it was the contractor is responsible for this netting. The dumpster contractors would simply pull up, loosen the netting if it's not already off, loosen the netting, throw it on the ground, go and dump the container like they would every other time, bring it back and just deliver the container, leave it to the contractor to put the netting back on. And I'm sorry if I wasn't completely clear, when the contractors called in last time, I think they're, you know, the solid lids, that's out of the question. They actually delivered one up the street from me this week, and it's on a pulley, it's a heavy metal mesh, I, I wouldn't advocate for anything like that, but if you guys can imagine a, a tennis net type thing with two by two or four by four netting, lightweight, these dumpsters are already prepped toward, it wouldn't take anything from any of these companies to do it, do it. It's just gonna take a little extra effort from the contractor themselves. As far as having two dumpsters on site, that would be space prohibitive, they constantly fight for space, they're having six or eight contractors work on a house at a time. They, they generally need to be mobile, they move them around every time they deliver them, they need to be parked on the street most of the time. Mr. Bates had a good comment that everything that goes in that dumpster pretty much is windblown, then nobody ever throws concrete in the dumpsters, but everything is windblown in those, sheet metal, everything. So that's kind of the way I had envisioned it, and I'm sorry I didn't explain myself better to begin with, but the net goes on and off by the contractor, the driver pulls up, pulls it away, redelivers it, the netting goes on by the contractor. That netting can't be that, you know, they're prepped for that netting, you can see the hooks on the side of them, they're, they're ready to have netting, so is there any other questions you guys had for me?
Does council have any questions for Mr. Toops? Uh, no sir, doesn't look that way.
I would like to say one more thing, I appreciate you guys' service to the community, I know it's not easy to have a target painted on you, put you out in public, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers?
We do. Your honor, members of council, I have Mr. Erickson on the line.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Erickson, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, I've talked on this subject for the last couple of days we have had, and I wanted to touch base on a couple of quick things. One thing that I feel that is a misconception in talking with the city managers over the last week or so, is the misconception that when we run business, that on these construction sites, that site, and we pick up a container, we, to the landfill, and we take it back to that same customer. That is not how we do, we cannot do that and be efficient in what we do. What we do is, we call what we call swivel, and we pick up a container that's empty, we take it to the constructor, set it down, we pick up the full container and landfill, and then take that empty one to the next job. Have to do. I cover, not just within the city of Casper, for everything from foreign junctions, but up, sure, and all the community in the county and outside the county. And it's habit, done it, take, heard the gentleman before saying that, things that won't get in the wind is just a partial, partial problem of getting this, thing getting hooked on the material that's in the, and when, from that material, then we have to get up there, and we can conscience, go to a job site, empty box, and leave with that netting that some contractor maybe spent a bunch of money on, and wrapped up that to stay within this ordinance, and we haul his tarp off and take it to somebody else. So, if the city manager and other members of your staff, I've been doing this since 1990. I started with BFI way back when, and we have always been able to, the city, to come upon a compromise to work through things. I've always been able to do that, in the last thirty years, always been able to do that. And I think we can still do that. If we compromise and put an amendment to this ordinance, just states that a construction site have, or must have, a covered inner, doesn't have to be the roll-off box, it can be a different covered container, lids, or a smaller container, to put the wind into, keep the heavy stuff in the box. And the problem of putting my risk trying to get these covers off, or get the herbs off, or hauling them away with a load because we can't get them off, it's just something that I feel that we should be able to work together on, and if we do that, should be able to have code enforcement, be able to look at a construction site and say, they don't have a covered container, we can cite them for that, or they're not a wind-blown trash cover, we can cite them for that. And work, we can compromise between us and come to a middle ground and figure this out. And I think that having it in the ordinance, that have one covered container, whether it be a roll-off, or a smaller container such as a commercial front-load or commercial rear-load container, to hold the wind-blown trash in, we could make that work. But to just mandate that every container has to be covered, is really, it just won't work. It just is going to be too risky for people in the way that we do business. And I guess that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions from council, of Mr. Erickson? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any other callers?
We do, one moment. Council, I have a Mr. Grinstead on the line.
Good evening, Mayor Freel and council, my name is Eric Grinstead with Insight Builders. Been a contractor in Casper for more than fifteen years, and I'm opposed to this stupid ordinance for controlled litter. Um, in, the regard to the litter, as far as being opposed to it, is just cost prohibitive. I agree with the previous caller. I'm not here to try to reinvent the wheel, not only am I a contractor, but I'm also a fly-fishing guide, and we are deathfully opposed to the four-letter word of wind. And we know that it is a problem here, but as a responsible builder in our community, I know that we have these dumpsters that have a line limit, not to exceed certain lines. And I know that there's a potential for wind-blown materials, but as also a responsible builder, we can control that. I feel that at the end of the day, we're not trying to reinvent, we'd like to control the litter. And we have code enforcement, it helps us to do that. And if we've got to incur that cost, we've got to pass it on to the consumer, and to have true trash in, it doesn't make any sense to me, as, as space is, it is limited. That's where I'm at.
Any questions from council? And Councilman Hopkins, could I get you to mute your computer? We're getting a lot of feedback.
I haven't feedback, apologize.
Still, it still isn't muted, Councilman Hopkins?
I'm muted and volume down.
Okay, any other questions from council or comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Grinstead. Okay, with there being no further calls, discussion.
I would just go back to my original concept of a cage. I know when we look at the architectural drawings of a building that's going up, we require a commercial building to have a wall around their trash containers. And so, I just go back to my original ideas, you have some kind of a cage, you put these trash containers in, and they are contained on two or three sides, and sometimes they're a roll-off, sometimes they're a front-load, sometimes they're a rear-load. But we require that when we review architecturally a new building. And since contractors are basically in the same kind of business, maybe we ought to consider that. But it's something that, I'm not saying it has to be a permanent thing, but it just might be something we want to consider. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Any other comments?
And Councilman Hopkins, if you, okay, thank you. The only other discussion I guess I would have, is I did talk to several contractors last week, and I do think that a lot of them kind of...
I think that a lot of them, yeah.
Councilman Hopkins, could you, all right, thank you. A lot of them feel that, you know, it's, this is almost a, a ordinance that's being created, and it's going against those that actually do what they're supposed to do, and we have maybe one or two bad actors out there, and so, it's kind of a punishment across the board, is what a bunch of them feel, is though, for those that don't properly maintain their dumpsters, so. But that has been said several times this last week, so. Any further discussion, Councilman Huber?
Well, I'm always a little bit confused about when the right time is to offer an amendment.
I was just about to ask for that after discussion, so. Any other discussion? Okay, so now we'll call for amendments. Councilman Huber?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I would move to amend 8.40.50, subpart B, to read, if there is a potential for wind-blown debris and litter, then the owner, agent, or contractor shall have and maintain on the site at least one container with covers, and on with the existing language in this, and I think that's what we discussed in the pre-meeting, and so I would make that motion to amend at this point.
Okay, Councilman Huber made a motion to amend, as he just read that off, wind-blown debris would be maintained with a cover inside of a dumpster, and at least one being on site. That kind of sums up what he was saying. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Councilman Pacheco. Any discussion? Councilman Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I offer a friendly edit and say, because it would be one thing to have that container on site, but I think we should specify and place all wind-blown materials in that container. To clarify, it's not enough to have it on site, you have to use it.
That's a very friendly amendment, and I'll wordsmith that language in here.
Any further discussion?
If Councilman Pacheco accepts that amendment, may I?
I second.
Okay, any further discussion on the amendment on the floor? Okay, so on that amendment, please call the roll and record the vote.
Councilman Cathy?
Aye.
Councilman Powell?
Aye.
Councilman Bates?
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilman Huber?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz?
Aye.
Mayor Freel?
Aye.
With Councilman Cathy voting nay, motion to amend passed.
Is there any other amendments?
Mr. Mayor, just so that it would be clear to everybody what we're now voting on, I can read the way that I wordsmith Councilman Powell's suggestion into this.
Okay.
Subpart B would now read, if there is a potential for wind-blown debris and litter, then the owner, agent, or contractor shall have and maintain on the site at least one container with covers, and shall place all potential wind-blown debris and litter into said covered container, and shall make appropriate arrangements for the collection thereof, or transport the same by himself, and then it goes on with the rest of the already existing language.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if it's possible to have the privilege of offering some language to consider from an enforcement standpoint, that was included in the original amendment, that sounds as though it may be coming out, could I turn to the chief to offer some insight?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity. The city attorney had proffered, the original amendment had language in there that included at, on the property, or originating from. Our concern was that if, once the litter is blown off of the construction site, we wouldn't be able to hold them accountable unless we had that portion of the amendment. So, as we're making the amendments on the city attorney's recommendation, we need to make sure that that is included also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would, so, I would move to include that language, that's in subpart A, because that was, and thank you, chief, for pointing that out.
Mr. Manager, just, or even, Mr. Attorney, just for a point of clarification, should this be a separate amendment that we make to it, not, we've already voted on the first amendment, so I would assume we need to make a second amendment to it?
And I'm making that as a separate amendment.
Okay, okay. So, you're, so the second amendment you're making...
In subpart A, it would add in, in the third line down from subpart A, it would read, of any litter on, at, or originating from the site within thirty days prior to the commencement of construction or demolition, blah, blah, blah. It would add in the at or originating from language that Mr. Henley and the chief had suggested.
Okay, so that amendment was made by Councilman Huber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Lutz. Discussion? Okay, with no discussion, please call the roll and record the vote.
Councilman Cathy?
Aye.
Councilman Powell?
Aye.
Councilman Bates?
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilman Huber?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye. Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz?
Aye.
Mayor Freel?
Aye.
All members voting aye, motion to amend passed.
Okay, and are there any other amendments?
Was there one more on there for two more containers? Is there two additional containers they wanted added on this?
Have you developed?
Yeah.
I move to accept, mayor, I move to accept two additional images of acceptable covers, which will allow a total of eight acceptable cover types.
All right, so Councilman Pacheco moved to add two additional acceptable covers to this. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bates. Discussion? Councilman Huber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I guess I'd ask this to Mr. Henley.
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye.
Mayor Freel.
Aye.
With Councilman Kathy voting nay, motion to amend passed.
All right, now we'll return to the original motion as amended or as originally read, or as amended. Any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll and record the vote.
Councilman Kathy.
Now, are we voting on Councilman Pacheco's amendment or the whole deal?
On Councilman Pacheco's amendment and then we'll go back to the whole deal.
Well, I'll second Councilman Pacheco's addition of those.
Didn't already have a second?
I didn't think it did, but.
Yeah, Councilman Bates had already seconded it.
Never mind.
Nay.
Councilman Powell.
Aye.
Councilman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye.
Mayor Freel.
Aye.
With Councilman Kathy voting nay, motion to amend passed.
All right, now we'll return to the original motion as amended or as originally read, or as amended. Any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll and record the vote.
Councilman Kathy.
Aye.
Councilman Powell.
Aye.
Councilman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye.
Mayor Freel.
Aye.
With Councilman Kathy voting nay, motion to amend passed.
All right, now we'll return to the original motion as amended or as originally read, or as amended. Any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll and record the vote.
Councilman Kathy.
Aye.
Councilman Powell.
Aye.
Councilman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye.
Mayor Freel.
I'm gonna go nay.
With Councilmembers Kathy and Bates voting nay and Mayor Freel voting nay, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance updating and amending sections of chapter 5.08 of the Casper Municipal Code.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins. Seconded by Councilman Powell. Council now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed.
Sorry. Yes, I was just connecting it. We have Ms. Amber Pollak on the line.
Okay, Ms. Pollak.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for taking my call. Wanted to call in and offer my support for the amendments that you have proposed. And I also wanted to add one comment. Wanted to ask the council to consider adding an amendment that would expressly allow the delivery of alcohol. Earlier, kind of at the beginning of having to close my business for COVID-19, I was in touch with the state liquor division to ask them to, you know, help me explore some alternative models that might be within state statute that I could, that I could use to keep my business afloat while we were, while we were closed. And it came to my attention that, that state liquor division, they indicated that delivery of alcohol is allowed by state statute, but it does vary in terms of what different municipalities allow in regards to delivery of alcohol. And so I just wanted to note that I think that would be a really helpful thing for a number of reasons. Obviously, there are lots of advantages to this option during this particular time to help, help businesses and consumers deal with COVID-19, but, you know, provide an additional outlook for revenue and that sort of thing. But really beyond that, I think it's an appropriate thing to do to ensure that our ordinances are as modern as we can make them to allow consumers to connect with businesses. We're living in a time where consumers are super accustomed to receiving pretty much anything they want delivered to their door. Alcohol is one of the few things that it's not always possible to do that with, but consumer trends indicate that there's a desire to use delivery services that's at a very high level even pre-COVID. And of course, we're seeing elevated levels of that right now. You know, this is not a novel concept. It's already happening all over the country, several places throughout the state. So, you know, I'm, I'm pretty involved with a number of organizations where we've talked about best practices for this. There's plenty known about best practices in this arena. We certainly wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel to make sure that we could do this safely. All requirements for selling alcohol would still be applicable. Primary difference really would be that ID checks would need to happen, you know, at the person's doorstep, whether or not at the register, but to me, there's no reason that we couldn't ensure the same protocols that are already ensured at the typical outlets where we sell liquor now using, using a delivery method. I think that there's, there's lots of ways that that could be done safely and lots of methods already exist to ensure that. And in fact, it's already happening in a sense. City of Casper allows companies to send wine directly to someone's door, which relies on the delivery person to ensure a proper ID check in those instances. So to me, I believe that this is a change that would be beneficial and I ask the council to consider, consider it. I think that further, you know, modernizing our liquor to reflect state statute makes a lot of sense, but I also think it makes a lot of sense, just in the sense that it allows businesses to better meet buying preferences of our customers. And that's all that I would ask of council.
Okay. Any questions or comments to Ms. Pollak? Councilman Bates?
Sorry about that. Ms. Amber, I am totally supporting what you're saying, but my understanding is unfortunately we cannot do that and if I could make an amendment to be able to offer that, I definitely, I want you to know that I definitely would, but my understanding is that we cannot do it. So just give you a heads up.
Any other questions or comments of Ms. Pollak? Councilman Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also support what Ms. Pollak is asking for. My understanding, our attorney, Mr. Henley, believes that we need a clarification from the Attorney General. And I would certainly ask for him to pursue that so we could get some clarification on this.
Mr. Henley?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. In fact, it is my opinion that the state statutes currently do not permit the delivery of alcohol from the property that's licensed to an off-premise location with the exceptions of those that are expressly made by the state legislature. And this legislature has certainly made those, both with respect to a business such as Ms. Pollak's, as far as manufacturing and for promotional purposes, they permit her to go off premises, but with special permits and special restrictions. Catering license for retail operators, again, a special permit with special restrictions. Wine deliveries, again, with special restrictions upon that and consistent with federal law. And so the legislature knows how to do that and to make it express if they want to do that. But the thing that particularly prohibits this is the state definition of sale, as they currently exist in the Wyoming statutes. And in that regard, I think that there is some dispute about this and the Liquor Commission had a flyer that went out that kind of danced around the, the actual conclusion quite a bit. They said that the statute doesn't expressly prohibit it, but when you actually look at the state statute provision on sale or sells, it in fact does prohibit delivering and considers that to be a sell or a sale, and that has to occur pursuant to the statute on the licensed property. Now, the city of Cheyenne, as part of their COVID kind of recovery effort, did adopt a, an ordinance stating that they would permit delivery of alcohol sales for a period of six months, but that is basically within their ordinance to sunset. And I did suggest and made reference to this, that if, if the council wanted me to approach the Attorney General to see if we could get an updated AG's opinion, that would be something I'd be happy to do because there is some confusion about it. And I think we've talked about in the past too, that I think that Evansville is trying to do this. I don't know how much success they've had. But we've had two Attorney Generals opinions in the past, one back in 1947. I couldn't read the opinion well enough, the print was so bad on it that I thought it was 48, you know, about a page and a quarter opinion, which seemed to indicate, no, you really couldn't do this. And then one in 1962, which talked about using Western Union as a method to buy gifts for people if you wanted to, to deliver a gift to people. There was another opinion out of the AG's office, but it wasn't an Attorney General's opinion, it was just by someone writing an opinion of the AG at a particular point in time. And again, they didn't even reference this particular provision of the statute, which at least in my mind is determinative, that talks about sales. So if the council would like me to do that, I'd be more than happy to do it. And of course, the council doesn't have to follow my advice either, but I would never recommend that.
Councilman Huber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is another one of those things where, you know, even if the, in my humble opinion, even if the Casper City Council wanted to grant this kind of a change, we don't have the power under state statutes. What you have to look at here is what the law would refer to as rules of statutory construction. The Wyoming State Legislature has spoken in minute detail about regulating the sale of alcoholic beverages. They have, they have literally preempted the entire field because they, they have spoken in such great detail about, you know, the, the need for licenses to be attached to a certain location, and then if you want to have off-premises sales, how you have to go about doing that, all that. Where the legislature has spoken in that kind of minute detail, that really does not leave anything for the courts, for the Attorney General or anybody else to interpret because the legislature has preempted the field. This would require, what, what these folks want to do, which I personally think might not be a bad idea, would require a change in the statute, in my opinion, not something that the Casper City Council can change. And I would be very reluctant to try to posture it up to where we were in essence bucking the state statutes, saying that, well, we're going to allow something that the state statutes don't allow. I think that's a very bad precedent in any field of the law, not just with reference to liquor regulation, but anytime. I don't think we want to get in that posture. So, well, personal sympathies might be with Ms. Pollak, I, I just don't think we have the power to do that. You gotta go to the legislature to talk to them about that.
Mr. Henley, with, having an AG review it or give an opinion, though, they would be able to look at it and tell us whether or not the legislature would allow that. And, I mean, they could clarify it for us, because there has been enough citizen input, I would think, at this point, of people wanting to see this, that it only seems right that we would get an opinion as to whether it can be done or not.
Well, and I, thank you, Mayor. And I think that if you did go to the AG, and I say that because obviously there's some dispute about this, because your attorney says, no, you can't, but obviously Evansville must be saying, yes, you can. And Cheyenne said, well, at least you can for this kind of emergency COVID matter. The, the one Supreme Court, well, in fact, you know, everything that I think that's come out of the AG's office has never relied on this particular statute. They've always looked at a general rule of a sale, whether that be in UCC or not. So, so I do suspect that the AG will say no, under the current statutory scenario and the statutes, that it would be impermissible and that it would be a legislative requirement. But I don't know that. I've, I've thought I would win cases before judges and the Supreme Court before and justices before and lost and was surprised. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't advise you to not take my advice, but I wouldn't tell you that my advice is always 100% going to be the case.
Councilman Bates?
Thank you. I, I agree, we, to check with the Attorney General to see where this stands, but another question is, if it has to go to a legislator, is there, and we find out that it has to be changed there, can we talk about WHAM jumping on board with us on this and pushing for this by chance? Is that something that WHAM would do with their, is that something that they would do?
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bates, indeed, that would be a resolution that we could submit for the organization to consider adding it to their list of priorities, similar to what we've done with other issues in years past.
Councilman Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the legislature dealt with some fairly significant changes to all the liquor license laws recently, and so, and there's so much in there, I doubt there would be much interest in taking on something as specific as this. And so, I, I mean, yes, we could ask for that to be addressed, but typically, there would be a number of changes proposed in sort of a package of revisions before I think they would want to wade into that business again, because liquor license laws are, as we all know, extremely complex and detailed. So, yes, we could suggest another resolution, but this may not be the right time to push for something that's relatively small compared to all of the things that they've had to deal with.
Councilman Hopkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things I really believe we need to consider, and I tend to, to agree with Councilman Huber and Mr. Henley's opinion, that this is a very difficult subject. The truth is, there is a license that's available on a limited basis to a number of people. It's called a full liquor license, except they're still tied to catering to a given spot. I think we need to, want to consider, are we going to open this up to all the breweries and all the distillers that you want to deliver three kegs of beer to a house party because somebody's 19 years old or 21 years old? Where are we going to go with that? I mean, they have to get, you have to give them, you have to give them a driver's license when you walk in and pick up a keg of beer to know where you're coming from. So you're going to have breweries deliver a keg of beer to a house party or a party in Timbuktu, Pathfinder Lake? That's not going to work, guys. This is just, the guys that have a full liquor license can already deliver dealer to, deliver liquor to a given spot. And I think it works just fine and to allow anybody to pack liquor into any place and just have somebody start drinking it, it's, it's not a good plan. And I can't believe the legislature would allow that in a long-term basis. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Pollak. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I just sure appreciate your thoughtful discussion. And we would really appreciate an AG opinion on that because, you know, as I said, this was, information was given to me by the Liquor Division. And they are pretty quick to tell me what we can and can't do according to state statutes and pretty knowledgeable on it. And so, I would definitely appreciate you guys verifying that with the AG. And yeah, I'm certainly not suggesting that Casper take on an ordinance that is not in line with state statutes. So, but it's my understanding as of now that it is according to Liquor Division. So, yeah, if we could get some clarification, that'd be very helpful to me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Henley, I would ask that if we can clarify that because there have been other, I have talked to other owners or the holders of retail liquor licenses. They've told me they have been, in fact, doing deliveries. And I think it fell in line with maybe wine and things like that. But they're under the impression that they can do that. And when we look across the state at some of these other municipalities, they're doing the same thing. So there's discrepancy in there. And I would like just to have it, just have an opinion to tell us whether or not what is actually being said from the Liquor Division is correct and whether they can or can't do it. So. Okay. Do we have any other callers?
We do not have any other callers.
Okay, so we'll move on to discussion. Discussion by council? Councilman Bates.
Thank you, Mayor. Probably going out on a far limb on this one, but as I look at the, looking at our packet, it talks about Chief McFeeters presented at the May 12, 2020 work session. And one of the things that was mentioned was that extra officers would have to be downtown during, for the open container. And that will most likely run into overtime. With all the COVID-19 events, or all the events being closed due to COVID-19 downtown and nothing's being allowed, I asked council to approve it, but approve it for year 2021. I can't, I don't feel comfortable justifying any type of overtime for something like this when we are doing furloughs, we are doing wage freezes, we are cutting budgets in all different areas. But to say, yes, we're going to go ahead and do open container downtown, pay the officers overtime in order for us to have this event, even though we can't have any events downtown, basically. I just ask that for, to approve it, but for the open container downtown to be approved for year 2021.
Councilman Pacheco.
Carter, could you comment on that? I mean, is there, is there a concern on that? I guess from the city standpoint, you're kind of in charge of looking at the budget. Is that a concern?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Pacheco, we absolutely believe that overtime will be a feature of this type of an approach.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, Councilman Cathy.
Yes, I would also like to discuss the removal of the open container areas and continue on as we are with by permit only, as has been done numerous times in the David Street Station area. And we wouldn't even necessarily, as Councilman Bates suggested, propose that it takes place next year. I think we ought to wait and see how the budget is and maybe even consider putting more police staff in as we're talking about leaving open positions right now. We may still not want to do it next year. So I guess at this time, I would like to amend it and remove the open container area from this particular ordinance. I would second that.
All right, well, let's wait until we get to amendments and then I'll let you make them at that time.
Okay.
So, any further discussion by anybody? Okay, I'm going to move to amendments. But the way that this is tonight, we have it broken down. So when I get to an amendment, if you want to, that deals with that particular section of it, then you can make them at that time. So with that being said, does anyone wish to amend things pertaining to open container? Councilman Cathy.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Cathy.
I would move that the new open container area be removed and continue with the ordinance as is by permit only.
Councilman Cathy has made a motion to remove the open container this year and continue as permit only. Do I have a second?
Hopkins, sir.
Second by Councilman Hopkins. Any discussion? Councilman Bates.
Thank you. With all due respect, Councilman Cathy, and I see where you're coming from with it, I still believe that it should be set in place for 2021. But I do believe that, as you mentioned, we should allow the permits as it has been in the past. But, and I get where you're coming from, we don't know next year. But I'd rather have something in place that everybody can look forward to and we know it's there than kind of scratch it right now and potentially bring it up next year if we're able to. I'd just rather have it in place. That's just my opinion. So I don't know how you feel about that or if that's something you would be willing to consider because I'd be considered to go with your amendment if you would work with me on that.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
I mean, I see where Ken's coming from. But I guess the thing too is depending on, you know, how long it takes versus you have that AG's opinion and, you know, the time period between. And we can kind of see like we're so effects projections are and things of that nature. I mean, we're probably going to be going, I mean, potentially, depending on what the opinion is, we'll be going through another round of putting the lic ordinance through another set of ordinance readings. And so, I mean, we'd have the, an additional opportunity, you know, to re-bring back up the open container on, at that time.
Any other discussion? Okay, so on the amendment that is on the floor by Councilman Cathy at this time, please call the roll and record the vote.
Councilman Cathy.
Aye.
Councilman Powell.
Nay.
Councilman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco.
Nay.
Councilman Huber.
Nay.
Councilman Johnson.
Nay.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Sorry. Nay.
Mayor Frill.
Nay.
With council members Powell, Pacheco, Huber, Johnson, and Mayor Frill and Vice Mayor Lutz voting nay, motion to amend fails.
All right, does anyone wish to amend things pertaining, any other things pertaining to open container?
I know we, most everybody said nay to Cathy, but I'd like to amend for the one that I mentioned, hold off for 2021, but continue with permit for David Street and areas like that.
All right, so Councilman Bates is making a motion to, repeat that again, the way that you want it said, Councilman Bates.
That for the open container for downtown, be put off, be approved for the year 2021. And we continue with permits downtown.
Okay, do I have a second for that? Okay, no second. Okay, anything else pertaining to open containers? Vice Mayor Lutz.
Just quick clarification. If we wanted to cut it down, where I know we had previously talked about like having a handful of weekend days and then like a Taco Tuesday. I mean, in order to kind of compromise and meet in the middle, and we said, you know, due to budgetary constraints, it can only be one day a week because obviously we're not just going to rack up overtime costs more than we absolutely have to. Would that need to be done in the ordinance? Or is that more of like a policy thing?
Mr. Manier or Mr. Henley? Mr. Henley?
Thank you, Mayor and council. The statute, or, excuse me, the ordinance as proposed currently permits the council to set the number and the place where these open containers would be. And that's the ordinance as it is before you right now. As you remember, we started this back in January and had the process and multiple work sessions and the like. And as a result of that, we came up with a pretty generic reference for open containers and permitting the city manager's office and the clerk's office to continue with the open container permit process as we previously had it, but saying, but council too could also permit additional open container permits at certain times and in certain places as they deemed appropriate. And then at that point, it was some, there was some thought at least that perhaps you would adopt resolutions to enact that. You know, we have something coming up this week. It's going to be Parade Week. Of course, we're not going to have Parade Week this year. But, and so we're going to have a special open container period. We then continued through and had some more work sessions and the like. And if you remember, and Councilman Bates made reference to this, Chief McFeeters kind of thoughts on how we could structure this and have it determined so that he could actually schedule officers in and have a limitation on the hours. And it was, he was said originally 6:00 PM to midnight and two days a week, Friday and Saturday, with another option for this, you know, Taco night or Tuesday night or something like that as the council deemed necessary. But as the ordinance stands right now, the thing that would change is that the manager would continue with, and the clerk would continue with the ability to permit Rock Around the Block and Art Night and things of that nature. But if there was something that the council wanted to do, then they could do it. And this simply gives them that permission to do it. And there's no defined location for this, as I recall, or if there was, it was a very big location. But you don't have to adopt the whole thing. Again, that was left to the council's discretion as the ordinance was originally drafted. So the answer to your question is, you don't have to. If you said, we don't want to have any this coming summer, then there would be no new ones this summer. But then towards next summer, if you decided, oh, things are better, or there's some real special event coming up, we'd like to have a couple of nights of open container, you could do that. And, you know, have the area as small or as large as you want depending upon the circumstance. So those are the options as I see it. And I know that, you know, the process for this amendment has been long. But it started out, actually, maybe that will come around and be advantageous if you want to curtail the amount, the number, and/or the location and/or the hours of this particular option.
Okay. Anything else pertaining to any other amendments pertaining to open container? Okay, does anyone wish to amend things pertaining to operational? All right, does anyone wish to amend things pertaining to special malt beverages section? And does anyone wish to amend things pertaining to manufacturers' off-premise permits? Mr. City Attorney.
And Mayor, that's simply to establish, we need some dollar amount or whether it's a zero amount or a $25 amount is, was recommended or some other amount, basically to permit the manufacturers to have a permit so that they could use their new ability that was granted by the legislature to have an off-premise promotional permit 12 times per year. And you don't have to make a charge for that. But if you do, we need some dollar amount. And the way the draft ordinance is structured, it left a blank for the council to fill in.
So are we asking if we want an amount in there and what that would be?
Yes.
And that would have to come in the form of an amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So is there anyone that wants to make an amendment for a dollar value in this section, other than zero? Okay.
Actually, we would need a zero because right now it is.
A zero?
Yeah.
Anybody want to make an amendment of a zero then for the amount?
I'll move to make it a zero.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Lutz. Any discussion on that amendment?
We didn't do 1,000, did we, by chance?
So can we call the roll and record?
Councilman Cathy.
Aye.
Councilman Powell.
Aye.
Councilman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye.
Mayor Frill.
Aye.
Members voting aye, motion to amend passed.
Okay, any additional amendments? Anybody wants to make to this ordinance? Okay, with no additional amendments, any further discussion on the overall ordinance? Third ordinance reading. Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to express my appreciation to Mr. Henley and his staff and to our city manager. This has been a very challenging process. And I know it took a lot of time and effort to craft these changes. And I think, I think we are addressing a number of problems that really needed to be addressed, particularly when it comes to the renewal process and having some penalties in place when that is not done properly or in a timely manner. So thank you to all of your, for all of your work.
Do you want me to ask?
Councilman Pacheco.
So just really quickly looking at, for the special malt beverage permit, we had a license fee for $1,000. That was 500,000. a license fee for a thousand dollars, that was 5.08.130, I just needed a clarification on that.
Again, I think Councilman Pacheco, you're right, we need some number in there, we had, when we did the proposed amendments, that was what was recommended, was the thousand dollars, but we don't have that in the current ordinance, we had left again blank...
That was blank, gotcha.
We did leave it as blank, yes. So that would be great if you guys could, and gals could fill that in.
Thank you for the clarification.
So the amount we came back with is zero on that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, any further discussion?
Because I, I had understood that last amendment for zero was just for the manufacturing, not for the special malt beverage permit, so we may want to just, one quick amendment, just to say that for the special malt beverage permit, that the permit fee would be zero dollars.
No, we're talking about two different things.
Okay. So I'm confused, I apologize, never mind.
Yep, we're talking about two different things here, so the special malt beverage permit that he's asking about is a thousand dollars, we're talking about the manufacturers, that's what is a zero, off-premise.
The manufacturers were a zero, but the, but the special malt beverage permit, we again left that one blank as well for the council to fill in, and the proposed amendment was for a thousand, but of course you don't need to accept that, it could be less, it could be more.
So that one's blank as well, is what you're saying?
That is correct, I'm glad you caught that.
We'll need to, we'll need to say that as well, okay, that's what I was, okay. So do we want to keep it at a thousand, I guess, I guess that's my question. Looking.
Councilman Bates?
I make an amendment to drop it to $500.
Councilman Powell?
I'll second that.
Okay, I've had a amendment by Councilman Bates, move it to 500, a second by Councilman Powell, any discussion? Councilman Hopkins?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not clear, when we have somebody with a full liquor license and they want to go cater an event, how much does that cost? We should certainly not penalize them versus, because that's the business they're in, to have somebody sell malt liquor or whatever, somewhere there's got to be some equity there, can somebody explain what it costs them to get a permit to cater a given party?
Mayor?
Councilman Pacheco?
Yeah, I agree, I agree with Councilman Hopkins, I think, I think it needs to remain a thousand dollars, I'm going to vote no on that amendment, just because of the fairness, and I do agree with that, that I think it needs to remain at a thousand dollars.
And as part of the discussion, I guess I would ask, Mr. City Manager, is the staff's recommendation would be a thousand dollars on this, correct? Okay, so I'm going to, I'll vote in line with Councilman Pacheco. Any further discussion? Councilman Huber?
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you and Councilman Pacheco on this, I think it should stay at a thousand dollars.
Any other discussion? Okay, so on the amendment that's on the floor now by Councilman Bates, please call the roll and record the roll.
Councilman Kathy?
Nay.
Councilman Powell?
Aye.
Councilman Bates?
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco?
Uh, nay.
Councilman Huber?
Nay.
Councilman Johnson?
Nay.
Councilman Hopkins?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Lutz?
Nay.
Mayor Freel?
Nay.
With Councilman Bates and Powell voting aye, motion to amend fails.
Okay, any further amendments on the issue of special malt beverage permit?
I'd like to make a motion to set the licensing fee for the special malt beverages for a thousand dollars.
So we've had a motion made by Councilman Pacheco to set that fee at a thousand dollars, do I have a second? Second by Vice Mayor Lutz? Discussion? No discussion? Call the roll and record the roll.
Councilman Kathy?
Aye.
Councilman Powell?
Aye.
Councilman Bates?
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilman Huber?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz?
Aye.
Mayor Freel?
Aye.
With all members voting aye, motion to amend, passed.
Okay, so I believe we have no further amendments to make, so on the motion as amended, could you call the roll and record the vote?
Councilman Kathy?
Aye.
Councilman Powell?
Aye.
Councilman Bates?
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilman Huber?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz?
Aye.
Mayor Freel?
Aye.
With all members voting aye, motion to pass as amended, passed.
Okay. Uh, say Councilman Bates?
Yes. Are we able to take just like a three-minute break since we've been at, we've still got a lot to go?
Sure. Is everybody good with that, we'll take a three-minute break, or five-minute break? Okay.
That was good.
Nope, he's good, up there.
Well, I can still lean back.
Okay, looks like we have everybody back. So we will move on, please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance amending section fifteen point oh two point one two oh and fifteen point oh four point oh seven oh of the City of Casper Municipal Code.
Sure would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read.
No moved.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Huber. Council will now listen to public comment, public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Public comment phone number is three oh seven two three five seven five six eight. And Councilman Hopkins, could you mute your device, please? Okay. So City Clerk Tremble, do we have any calls?
We do, Your Honor, we are just getting her joined onto the conference call, one moment.
Okay.
Your Honor, while we're waiting, could I make a recommendation too? As we go through this, we have a lot of speakers that if we have a question for our callers to ask questions, but to save the comments and conversation for the discussion, I think it will speed things along a little bit. So instead of making comments on every discussion point from our callers, wait till the discussion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have, I have Ms. Pam Elrod on the line for you.
Okay. Good evening, Ms. Elrod.
Hello, my name is Pam Elrod, I'm at one two nine two zero Dusty Lane. And I was just, I'd like to start right off the last time. First, as I, as I had said, said before, I spent a lot of hours reviewing videos and ordinances. And I stand on the fact that these two section ordinances had international on them, however you explain it, so I'll just move on. It is said that this is all for safety and life-threatening. And your conversation is mostly landlords, um, uh, uh, and defense, um, landlords and protecting the tenants from the landlords, um, for, um, so it, it is hard because when I hear the news and stuff like that, you defend all of this because of that, but nothing is really completely talked about with our true main complaint, which is private ownership. And so it is hard to trust what an ordinance is described or discussed as one way. But on the video from April fourteenth, you stated you can, by complaint, give citations that are non-endangered or non-life-threatening. And so I heard that on that video and so, um, it was, but all I hear is that it, it is for the safety of everybody and, and everything like that. But it isn't necessarily so. And like I said before, uh, you know, the bad thing about this is that it cannot, uh, be across the board, fair and just for every person. And it leaves a citizen without recourse, uh, and at the mercy of hopefully of a non-biased judge. And by complaint, we're guilty before proven innocent, uh, as a citizen, and it's expensive, which can cause, uh, tenants to be, uh, kicked out because the landlords can't afford it, or private owners. And, um, so just non-threatening. And, and it's a very punitive ordinance, in my opinion. And, um, I feel like property has no business being a part of this ordinance to begin, begin with. It opens the door for laws to get more intringing, government is getting more and more powerful. This is not what the Constitution wants. Laws is not supposed to just, uh, to be a quick fix for everything. And just like the protesters who you welcome in Casper and you respect their rights to protest in Casper, I would, uh, would, uh, challenge you, uh, by showing your sincerity on this issue, to postpone continuing the debate on this amendment till you open up for citizens to come before you in a proper way that we're supposed to, uh, or just, just open up. And, uh, when, it, it, it is kind of like, it makes it hard for us to trust you when you pose off us to come before on this issue. So, um, I just wish that you weren't so bent on this and, uh, that you would, uh, listen to us in person. And, um, I think that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Elrod? Okay, thank you ma'am.
Thank you, bye-bye.
We are trying to transfer the next one into the call, we've had a few callers call in too, one moment. Your Honor, I have Ms. Kathy Idd on the line.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Idd?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead. Uh-huh.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, my name's Kathy Idd, and I live at thirty-eight thirty-eight Garden Creek Road. Um, over the last several months, a number of concerning comments have been made by our city council members, such as threatening to take away the civil liberties of Casper residents, and another comment threatening to withhold a local business owner's liquor license. Um, you know, these comments have not only been authoritarian in spirit, but more importantly, these comments arrogantly dismiss our God-given individual liberties defended by the U.S. Constitution, Bill of Rights, a document that every one of you swore to uphold. Unfortunately, it seems that the same sort of authoritarian attitude in our city government is being advanced in this proposed ordinance amending the municipal code. Um, I've been a real estate agent for almost thirty years, and during this time, I've witnessed an untold number of dwellings, some of them rentals and some owner-occupants that have housed slum occupants, not slum landlords, but slum occupants. And that, the, I mean, just the squalor that these tenants and owners live in, um, that I've observed was indescribable. Um, I could carry on about that, but I won't. It's just, it really is difficult to comprehend how anyone could choose to live in those conditions. But for many of these people, it is exactly that, it's a choice. Um, quite often in these situations, the landlord has nothing to do with those deplorable living conditions. And situations like these also exist in an owner-occupant residence. Again, it's a choice, and quite frankly, that choice is theirs to make, not the city government. Whether it's the occupant's culture they were raised in, or mental illness, or simply a lifestyle choice, the fact remains that most of these unsanitary or unsafe conditions are through no fault of the landlord. As a matter of fact, the Casper Housing Authority should know what I'm speaking about. Um, recently that this government agency moved dozens of families out of government-owned residential properties into a new, large subsidized housing development in South Casper. And many of the Casper Housing Authority properties that these tenants vacated were left in filthy, dilapidated condition. It's interesting that even though there are laws in place to address slum landlords, there is, uh, nothing was done to prevent and enforce slum tenants from destroying rental dwellings that were paid for by American taxpayers. One thing I would like to mention, though, is that, um, those who choose to live in unsanitary conditions is not limited to the impoverished, but it truly does include all sectors of the economic spectrum. I've been in beautiful, in homes located in beautiful neighborhoods that have been an eyesore inside and out. Um, it seems that the proposed ordinance does not differentiate between an owner-occupant and a renter-occupant, nor does it really matter. If it's owner, renter, rich or poor alike, they all have an inalienable right to live how they see fit in their home, whether it's squeaky-clean or super-dirty. The Wyoming Residential Rental Property Act already addresses the issues of violations of safety codes by landlords. And rather than safety concerns, this ordinance seems to be a perfect vehicle for violating the privacy of property owners. It gives policing powers to social agencies and nosy neighbors, and it expands the ever-growing overreach of government. Um, in an earlier session, one of the council members stated that the primary function of government is to protect citizens, and he dismissed the concerns of some earlier speakers you had who cited the U.S. Constitution and the limitations it places on elected government officials. But I'd like to ask if those dismissive comments simply reflect that particular council member's ignorance, or is it a willful disregard on behalf of the city council towards Casper citizens? And the reason I ask that is that the primary function of government is not to protect its citizens' living conditions. Our government's primary function is to secure and defend our God-given inalienable rights of our private property, life and liberty. And I would like to offer this quote by Alexander Hamilton, who stated in the Federalist Papers seventy-eight, number seventy-eight. And the quote goes like this, "There is no position which depends on clear principles than that every act of a delegated authority contrary to the tenor of the commission under which it is, under which is exercised is void. No legislative act, there contrary to the Constitution, can be valid. To that, deny this would be to affirm that the deputy is greater than his principal, that the servant is above his master, that the representatives of the people are, of the people are superior to the people themselves, that men acting by virtue of powers may do not only what their powers do not authorize, but what they forbid," end quote. This ordinance, as well as the other recent comments of our city council members, seem to illustrate that the Casper City Council believes it is above its master, and that the representatives of the people are superior to the people themselves. I believe this ordinance is nothing more than a revenue generator and an expansion of power on the part of our city government. So with that, I would urge this council to table this ordinance until the public can have a face-to-face debate with the council, or preferably to end this debate today with a no vote on this ordinance. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Idd? Okay, thank you ma'am.
Thank you. Counsel, I have Ms. Linda Bergeron on the line for you.
Okay, good evening, Ms. Bergeron.
Good evening, Mayor Freo and members of the council, I appreciate this time to speak. I'd like to, uh, refresh your memory about Amendment Four of the, uh, Bill of Rights, uh, the right of the people to be secure in their persons. Let me emphasize, houses, papers, effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated, and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause, supported by oath or affirmation, and particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons and things to be seized. Um, it is my understanding that when code enforcement comes upon a property, if they see another violation while they're there addressing the first violation, they can also fight for that second violation. Um, I speak in opposition to this ordinance. National Socialism in Holland, uh, neighbors informed upon neighbors. Uh, we can remember Corey Tenboon in The Hiding Place to refresh our memories. Those who, um, neglect to learn history are doomed to repeat it. The first plank of the Communist Manifesto is the abolition of private property rights. We need to be very clear that your oath of office, um, uh, admonishes you to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Wyoming. Uh, grievances of the Declaration of Independence, um, if you look over those grievances, you might, uh, uh, be, uh, cognizant of the fact that, uh, many of the grievances, we seem to be re-implementing into our system of government at the current time. Just one grievance I'd like to bring to your attention, for taking away our charters, abolishing our most valuable laws, and altering fundamentally the form of our government. I believe that's what's being done here. Uh, are we re-implementing those grievances? I would like you to seriously ask yourself that at this time. Please review your oath of office, I'd like to draw your attention to the Wyoming Constitution, Article One, Section Thirty-Six. Uh, rights are enumerated, uh, I'm sorry, rights not enumerated, reserved to the people. The enumeration and disconstitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny, impair, or disparage others retained by the people. I believe that you're taking, um, by this ordinance, a very, very, uh, valuable right of the people, and, um, diminishing that right and actually destroying that right. Uh, I'm very concerned about what this ordinance is doing. I also want to ask a question. Is it a bureaucratic court where this will be appealed through? Uh, my example of this would be OSHA. I know that if there's an OSHA violation, you don't go through a regular court, you go through an OSHA court.
One minute, Ms. Bergeron.
Okay.
You have one minute left.
Okay, one minute left, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted, uh, okay. Private property ownership is the essence of a free society. We need to be self-governing in our own home. Councilman Huber suggested on last reading of this ordinance that he would make an amendment to protect our Fourth Amendment rights. I would like, uh, him to maybe address that at this time. Also, when we were building our home, uh, we had to go through several agencies and, uh, make sure that everything was just right before we even got occupancy to our own home. That this is the time for an ordinance at, like that, when we're building our homes, not when we live in our homes and have, when our home is our castle. Another thing I'd like to address-
Ms. Bergeron, I'll need to have you wrap it up.
Okay, just briefly, have we considered, uh, the unintended con, unintended consequence to an older resident, perhaps a widow, who has a very limited, um, income and really can't fix things up just prim and proper? Uh, think of that poor woman and her living conditions, and what you will do to her home and her life.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions of Ms. Bergeron? The Councilman Huber.
Mr. Mayor, I would just very briefly like to, uh, answer Ms. Bergeron's, uh, question regarding the, uh, the search warrant, uh, comment and, uh, representation that I made at the last meeting. Uh, since then, with the assistance of, uh, Mr. Henley, uh, I have, uh, looked at the, uh, current building code. There are two provisions in the current building code that this safety ordinance would be an addition to, namely, Section one point zero four point six, uh, which very clearly states that, uh, if, uh, permission is not granted by an owner or an occupant of a structure, that then, uh, any, uh, inspection official would have to go and get a search warrant. And so this, uh, on that ground, it simply does not violate the Fourth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution or the similar provision in the Wyoming, uh, Constitution, because what those state is that if permission is denied, you have to go get a search warrant. Also, there is, uh, Section one zero zero, one zero two point two that clearly states that any, uh, revisions or provisions in this code shall not be deemed to overrule any other provisions of law. So there is nothing in this code that, uh, implies that, uh, a violation of the Fourth Amendment. Because if somebody says, yes, you're welcome to come in, people always have the right to do that. They also have the right to say, no, we don't want a public official to come in. If they say, no, we don't want you to come in, that public official has to go get a search warrant. Also, as to her question about what court would ultimately be, uh, reviewing this, under Wyoming law, uh, that would be the, uh, District Court that would be ultimately reviewing these things.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, uh, or questions for Ms. Bergeron? Okay, thank you ma'am.
Okay, thank you. We have another caller, just one moment.
Okay.
Thanks for keeping time, Mr. Mayor.
Your Honor, I have a Ms. Jamie Bates on the line.
Okay, Ms. Bates?
Mayor and Council, um, I wanted to thank you to start off with for, um, looking out for, um, those tenants and, um, who are not able to take, um, address, you know, the landlords not taking care of their own, their property. Um, and I wanted to- And I wanted to thank Councilman Huber for looking into the unreasonable search and seizure aspect of it. I had another comment that I was concerned, at the top of this amendment that you're proposing here, it references two international codes that are listed in our municipal code. I cannot find the verbiage of those international codes anywhere viewable online, and that was the International Residential Code and the International Building Code. I would really like it if the city could make those, all of those international codes that we've adopted, find a way to add them in where we can search them and view them online in the municipal code. Because right now, they're just by title only, and you can't actually read any of it. So, there's no way to verify that things are or are not covered. And then, my other request is that I would like you to table the vote for the second reading and the third reading until we can meet again in person. It's very difficult to hear everybody's opinions and thoughts and their comments when you're viewing online on YouTube, because it's already delayed. I can hear some people, but other times, the phones are cutting out, so I don't know what other people have commented. And if I can't hear it, I doubt that counsel can really hear it. I heard one comment earlier in the discussion where it was so garbled, I don't know how anybody could really understand what the gentleman was saying. And that's not an effective way to pass ordinances that impact directly everybody's personal lives. So, I'd really like it if counsel would table the second vote and the third vote until we can meet in person in some form or another where you can actually hear people and what they're saying. That's it. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions of Mrs. Bates? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a Mr. Bagwell on the line.
Okay, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Freo, councilmembers. This is an awkward way to talk to you guys, because I can't see your reactions or I don't really know what anybody else has talked about. But my only concern is, we did this in 2018. We don't have Councilman Walsh, and we don't have Councilman Laird there that made a whole lot of sense about this, that we're very opposed to it. I guess, to make this very short, I know you guys have heard a lot. The thing is, I'm seeing a lot of people that are against this. They're never going to vote for anybody on this council because of this, that this is their tipping point. So, I just ask that, since it's during when we can't come down, and this is for everybody, I don't think you guys are communists, I don't think any of that of you. But I think that we could table this and wait until we can address this in a public forum, like we did last time. I emailed Councilman Bates. He responded twice immediately, and I appreciate that so much. Never heard back from Pacheco, but that's what I had asked, is just that we, you know, hold off on this a little bit. And as far as Mr. Huber, I understand what you're saying, but it's also, you're either going to let us in, or you're going to let us in. There's no, there's no give there. It's either you can let us in, which I've always talked about with police officers. Mayor, you understand this. We're kind of putting people at jeopardy here, because what if the reason why they are in bad shape, property's bad, what if they're doing something illegal there? They let a code official in, we may never see them again. We don't have police that can be everywhere all the time. We don't want to endanger them any more than we already have. And I know they're busy. So, if they're responding to all these calls about checking somebody's basement for cracks or anything like that, I think we'll run into some issues there. But I didn't want to, I didn't even want to say all this. The Wyoming Landlord Tenant Act actually takes care of all this. So, this is, we don't even need this. The Wyoming Landlord Tenant Act addresses exactly the portioning way about the landlords and tenants. They have to provide a place that's clean and, you know, up to code, basically. Has a heater, water heater, all that. So, again, I don't want to drag out your time. I just think that if we table this, I think it would be a lot better. People would have a lot better feeling if something wasn't being done behind their back. So, it's kind of for everybody.
Okay, any, any questions of Mr. Bagwell? Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We're about to join the other caller, the next caller. One moment. Counsel, I have a Ms. Chavez on the line.
Okay, good evening, Ms. Chavez.
Hi, how are you this evening?
Good. Go ahead.
Good. So, I am representing Casper Housing Authority this evening. So, I just kind of wanted to start by giving you a little bit of background as far as the housing services that we provide, and kind of what that looks like and what we do as an agency to make sure that we are providing safe and affordable housing for the residents of our community. So, we have a number of different housing programs that come from a variety of different funding sources to help provide safe and affordable housing for our residents and community members. We do take very seriously the safety and the conditions in which we are placing people. So, we have our own buildings that we own, and then we have properties that we manage, along with working relationships with a number of different landlords in the community. And they all fall under some of our programs. So, again, the most important thing is for us to find safe and affordable housing for our families. Some of the things that we do to ensure that that is happening, and we do this with our own properties as well as the other landlords that we partner with in the community. So, we do HQS inspections, housing quality standard inspections, before people move in to make sure that they are safe for the families living in those. And those are conducted before and then periodically, every time that they renew, we have to go in and do that inspection. If they have any issues or problems, we can go back in. Again, if it's our properties, we'll take care of it. If it's a landlord that we're partnering with, we will work with them to make sure that the issue is resolved so that the housing situation is safe. We also do pest control in the spring and in the fall, and as needed throughout the year, to, again, make sure that that's safe and there's no infestation of bugs or rodents or things like that. We do work with a lot of landlords in the community, approximately 130 of them. All wonderful landlords. Again, they do really well in making sure that those HQS inspections are passed. One of the things that, or I guess an observation that has been made is that sometimes there is a lack of education for the landlords as far as what the standard is for housing and what that would look like. So, if there is an issue, most of them are willing to work with us, and once that education component is provided, they do meet those standards and those inspections are passed. We also take the management of the taxpayer funds very seriously, which I think is evident through the progress that our Casper Housing Authority has made over the years, our successful transition from an antiquated public housing program to a modern rental assistant demonstration program with the added constructions of safe and affordable housing. Unfortunately, as an agency, we are not able to enforce those housing quality standard inspections on any low-income or workforce families who are not receiving services through any of our programs. So, there is a little bit of a gap there. We are aware that some of the conditions that our families are living in are definitely subpar, and that there needs to be some kind of enforcement. Prior to working for Casper Housing Authority, I worked in early intervention, which required a lot of home visits, and working with children, birth to five, and their families. Most of those services were done in-home in their natural environment. So, I personally have also seen the unsafe conditions that a lot of our community members live in. And they, they're obviously feel like they don't have a voice, but there isn't any other place they can rent, because it's not affordable. So, a lot of times, they, they just put up with what they have for the sake of having a roof over their head.
Ma'am, I'll have to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Any, any questions for Ms. Chavez? Councilman Pacheco.
Yvonne, this is Ray. So, just for, hi, just for clarification, the Housing Authority is in support and in favor of this ordinance, correct?
Yes, yes. And all of our programs support that with the HQS inspections that we do and making sure people are living in safe environments.
Okay, I just wanted that for the record. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Your Honor, I have Mr. Paul Fritzler on the line.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Fritzler.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Again, this is Paul Fritzler with the Department of Family Services, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to kind of discuss this matter and what our experience is. First of all, we certainly understand the tenant responsibility in maintaining their living condition, and that, you know, a landlord can supply all the heating and plumbing and all sorts of benefits to the tenant, but the tenant has to maintain and care for those amenities. And so, first of all, I certainly understand that. Also, that in our experience, it's not all landlords. We work with some great landlords that really help us find housing for families and vulnerable adults. So, some of the things that we do see that sometimes the tenant has a very difficult time finding a successful resolution to, or even a timely resolution to, are typically structural issues. You know, where flooring jeopardizes, you know, just, and I'm not talking about carpet, but structurally, flooring where holes are in the floor, very, very poor insulation, broken windows. Many times, it's heating and plumbing. And often, the plumbing leaks or maybe leading to mold situations where it puts the family at risk of being homeless or having to find alternative housing. The other is probably, another big one is pest control. You know, mice or cockroaches. Obviously, there's some pests that are certainly not under the purview of a landlord. And typically, that's what we run into. Families are struggling to maintain housing, which, you know, jeopardizes them staying together. We do, you know, if they, if they run into a situation where they're not able to keep up with utilities, which definitely causes a problem in many ways, there's many ways to get assistance with that. But as far as structural or heating, plumbing issues, there's just not a lot of recourse for them. And that's, that's kind of why we see an importance to have an ordinance that gives a successful or at least a time reasonable way for families to maintain their housing. A lot of times, they're at the mercy of, you know, they don't have maybe the best credit or different histories to maintain housing or to seek new housing. And so, that's kind of where we're at. We, you know, when it comes to finding housing in Casper, that can definitely be a barrier for families and keeping them together. So, I just kind of wanted to make that point.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Fritzler? Councilman Bates.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Paul, I asked this question once before, and I just wanted to ask you this question. If the, you talked about the families and people that live in houses and the structural problems and kind of the issues that they run into, and how hard it is for them to find a home or a place to live. With, if this ordinance goes through, and if their place does not meet the standards of this ordinance, how many families do you think would possibly lose their personal homes regarding this ordinance and especially DFS families? And where would they go? What would happen to them if this ordinance is passed?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Bates. Really, what I'm looking at would be, like I said, I don't, this isn't necessarily a common practice of landlords in Casper, that, you know, there is a lot of housing, I don't want to say a lot, but structurally, heating and plumbing, for the most part, is supplied. The landlords do a good job of helping us find housing for people and working out deposits and rent. And so, I don't see that it's a large number, but it's an experience that, you know, one of those stats that the department does not keep track of is, you know, what the, if it was a landlord issue or a client issue that led to the condition of the home. So, that's kind of a difficult question to answer. It's, you know, how many families that we'd be looking at? Maybe code enforcement would have a better idea of that. But certainly, you know, it's, it's an, has been an ongoing issue, you know, for years as far as some landlords.
Councilman Bates, go ahead.
Thank you for the call up. So, I guess, let me make this easier. For tenants and renters, I totally get this ordinance, and I've always said that. I 100% get it. But I also know that DFS deals with families that own their own home and have problems, you know, that are, have financial issues and things like that. So, my question to you would be, from So, my question to you would be, from DFS perspective or your own personal perspective, would this ordinance benefit those families? Or could this ordinance hurt the private homeowners and their families overall? With the families that you've seen in private homes? Would it benefit them or not?
Uh, as far as a, a private home and having to maintain those, those issues, I, you know, I don't know as, um, it would depend on how far the, uh, ordinance went. Um, for instance, you know, if, if we run into that in a privately-owned home, then what we're considering is, um, safety, but secondly is, uh, what the resolution is. Are there services from the department or other resources to make those repairs? Um, so, the, you know, from the department's perspective, it's, um, we're, we're kind of already there anyway in some of those private situations to, um, find, to help the families find the resources to, uh, mitigate those safety issues.
Any other questions of Mr. Fritzler? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have one more caller on the line. One moment. Your Honor, I have Ms. Jamie Lovell on the phone.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Lovell?
Uh, yes, good evening. Um, I just wanted to speak in favor of, there still, uh, being, uh, Executive Director for Natrona County Meals over the past seventeen years, I have seen many of our seniors live in very unfavorable conditions. And it's not only hard on our seniors that live this way, but on our volunteers that have to go into dangerous places to deliver meals to those who need them. So, it would be nice to have, um, someone to look after them so that they would be able to live safely and our volunteers would be able to deliver safely.
Any questions for Ms. Lovell? Uh, Councilman Pacheco.
Ms. Lovell, could you, I didn't quite catch, where are you the executive director at or where the executive director? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
I'm sorry, at Natrona County Meals on Wheels.
Oh, okay, yes, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. No worries. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Have a wonderful night.
You too.
We have no other callers at this time.
Okay. Thank you. With no other callers, we'll move on to discussion. Vice Mayor Lutz.
All right. So, I do think that a lot of valuable things were really brought up, and I totally am getting, I've had a ton of emails and calls that people would really prefer to discuss this ordinance in particular with us in person. Um, and so, I mean, we could all sit here for twenty more minutes and talk about potential amendments or rebuttal to comments that were made, but I just, I don't know that that's necessary at this time. So, I'd like to move that we table this to a date certain for the next meeting, hopefully seeing that we can meet in person for the next meeting.
All right. So, Councilman Lutz is moving to, uh, table this to a date certain. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bates. Any discussion? Councilman Hopkins, can you unmute yourself, please?
I forgot the, I forgot the click on. Uh, I, I, I'm not disagreeing with the mox at all, but, uh, I, I tell you, tonight, we did not hear from Slumlord. Uh, they're, they're out there, and all of us have seen some of the results of Slumlords. Uh, the one thing we might want to consider is, um, the, the folks that go in and sent us pictures of what goes on in some of these places, and I can tell you, I can drive you by some that probably aren't fond to live in. In my early years in my marriage, we moved every, on the average, every six months for five years, because we're moving to Laramie and moving back to where the jobs were. But, uh, some are good and some are not so good. And it's, it's really difficult for the people that have to get by on whatever they can afford. Um, I, I fixed more plumbing and more electrical and more painting than I want to mention, and these people have a hard time. But tonight, we did not hear from Slumlords. We heard from legitimate people that want to rent and provide a good home for people, and on the other hand, they have people that move into their house and, or into their apartment, and they can do $20,000 of damage, uh, within six months. And I have seen the results of that. So, I, I would like to at least consider some way that if people are called to a house for one reason or another, it's not going to be city employees, it's, it's going to be people with Health Department and, uh, people that send you electricity and whatever. These are people that see this kind of living conditions. And, uh, once they do that, and if you can document those things time after time, we need a, a expedited eviction notice. It's like you're out of there overnight, because these people can do more damage in one day than these landlords can take care of in repairing and renting for a year. So, I, 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 I really am for this ordinance, but, uh, we need to give some protection to landlords, and I think the only way to do that is say, if, if there's continued damage, uh, by successive reports of some kind or another, even Meals on Wheels, uh, we need to throw them out of there. It, I'm sorry, I, I understand, they may not be able to find out what they need to do for themselves, but they shouldn't be able to allow, destroy property any more than somebody should be able to throw rocks through your front window. Thank you.
Okay. So, comments on the, the table that is on the table right now? Councilman Bates?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, do we, and I, I know I'm setting this, uh, so, I apologize. Do we have an idea at all of when we all will be back there where you guys are at now at City Hall, and people can come in and voice their comment? Because if we don't have an answer right now through June, I ask that we table this to, uh, July 7th, so it gives us a month to make sure that we're following all the orders or whatever we need to do. Um, so, if we have an answer that, yeah, we're looking at, uh, being at City Hall and people coming to talk to us sometime in June, great, I'm for it, but if not, I'd ask that we table this until July 7th.
Okay. So, Councilman Bates, we have the ta- uh, we have a table made by Vice Mayor Lutz. That's what we're discussing at this point. Um, and we can discuss a date certain after what we decide whether we table or not, correct? Mr. Attorney?
Uh, Your Honor, I believe that, uh, Ms. Lutz's motion was to, uh, table to a date certain-
Date certain.
-being the next meeting of the council.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Pacheco.
So, on to the point of the table, the discussion for the table. My, my question is, is that are we tabling it because we need more time to look at how protection of landlords? Are we looking at this because we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to have more people to come in and have the conversation with us? Um, you know, to me, we've, we've had some great conversations with people within the community, the Housing Authority, Meals on Wheels, uh, Department of Family Services that are all for this, that see this every day, that work in this every day. They know, they, they are, are working with the city on trying to maintain, um, structures that are safe for families. So, my question is, is that are we doing that because we want to wait so we can have more people to come in, um, and have that conversation, I guess, after the, um, I guess that's my, my question of why we're tabling, um, at this point.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
All right. So, I guess unfortunately, it's kind of a combo. I think that there's been a lot of things brought up as far as, you know, potential, potentially, um, unintentionally hurting landlords. I also think that there's things brought up that maybe we need to focus more on, like, the actual functions of a home, like plumbing and heating versus, like, cleanliness and, like, hoarding and, like, things of that nature. And so, I mean, mostly, it's because of, you know, the public is very clear that they would rather us wait, but I personally probably have some amendments that I might need, like, a handful more time to prepare.
Thanks for the clarification.
Councilman Powell. And then I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I, I think we should move forward. I think, I, I think we're all very familiar with the arguments that have been made. Um, we've heard them before, this, it was the same arguments made when the International Property Code was before us. Um, and, um, uh, I don't think, I don't think that the, the input will vary. I disagree that the people have, have spoken. We've heard from a small number of people who have very strongly-held opinions and believe we're violating our constitutional oath. I disagree. Um, and, uh, and I think we'll continue to hear those same comments, whether we do it in person or continue this process, uh, as we have it currently lined out. And, and I doubt very much that, uh, I mean, I know I'm going to vote for it, uh, I've heard all those comments, and, um, and, and I, and I don't think people's minds are going to be changed by that input. So, uh, we all know where we stand on this, I think, so I think we should just continue. Thank you.
Councilman Huber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to agree with everything that Councilman Powell just said. Uh, I absolutely agree with the idea of, uh, public input, citizen input. We have had a great amount of input on this. I don't think that tabling this is going, all we're going to hear is we're going to hear the same things again that we've already heard. We're going to hear it repeated over and over by the people on both sides, and they, uh, probably, the only thing they might get louder is, uh, but we've already heard it. We've already heard all of the arguments. You know, two years ago, people said, well, take this and, and, you know, come up with something that's Casper-specific, and so, that's what we've done. This has been worked on for two years now. I don't see any benefit at all to delaying it further, uh, other than that, uh, those people that just want to try to kill this and have it die at an unnatural death. And so, uh, you know, I don't see where there's going to be any value to delay this any further. We'll just hear the same arguments again over and over. So, let's move forward with this, one way or the other.
Councilman Pacheco.
Yeah, I want to, I don't want to reiterate or go over again what Councilman Huber said, but I was on the council at the time when we did that in 2018, and, and it was very overwhelmingly, um, expressed to us to take that part of it out and to rework it for Casper-specific. I think the city staff diligently worked on it, um, and put that time and effort into it, and I think it's, um, been brought to us. We've gone over that. Um, if I believe, if I'm correct, 30-day portal, we had that for 30 days. Am I correct in that? Um, and so, I think we've had, um, a lot of input, and I think we can move forward with this, and I appreciate the city staff putting the time and effort, um, when we put them through this a couple of years ago, so.
Councilman Bates?
Go ahead and allow Hopkins to go, and I'll go after him.
Can you repeat that?
Go ahead and allow Hopkins, he's been waiting patiently, and then I'll go.
Councilman Hopkins.
Uh, I'm sorry, I still didn't hear what Councilman Bates said.
He was letting you go first, if you had comments.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with going ahead with this. I, I'm not sure we need to table it, because, uh, the other councilmembers are right, we are going to hear the same arguments on both sides. So, I'm, I'm saying let's proceed.
Okay. Councilman Bates?
So, I heard what you guys mentioned, I wasn't on the council for that in 2018, obviously, but as you guys have said, the people at that time said, make it, uh, we don't like that one, create a new one, and then bring it back to us. And you guys say that we've heard on both sides of the, the story, and we're going to continue to hear the exact same thing, but I question how many people actually calling compared to coming down and actually talking to us face-to-face? So, by, in my opinion, we should wait, uh, I agree with, uh, Council, uh, Vice Mayor Lutz, we need to table this, we need to allow anybody and everybody to have a chance to speak on this, because it's not affecting a few, it's affecting the entire city of Casper. And if the entire city of Casper wants to come to City Hall and speak to us the same thing over and over and over, that is their right, that's what, that, that's, we need to give them that opportunity. And so, I strongly disagree with moving forward, and I strongly believe allowing the entire citizens of Casper to speak to us face-to-face, all of us. That's my opinion.
Councilman Huber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got to, I, I've got to say this. I hear people saying that, well, we need to wait until we can do this in person and have people down here in the council chambers. Well, damn it, if that's the case, then everything that we have done at the last several meetings that we have had is null and void and should just be thrown out. And I hate to raise my voice, and I hate to speak that way, but that is how false that argument is. If that, if, if this issue, you know, there are a lot of things that we decide that are important to people, and if, if we have short-cutted something somewhere along the line, then we need to back up a month or so here and, and go redo everything else that we've done so, so that we can have people here talking to us about it instead of doing it the way that we have. Uh, and, and I'm, I'm sorry to raise my voice, I'm sorry to speak that way, but that is how facetious and silly I think that argument is.
Okay. Councilman Kathy, and I'll come back to you, Vice Mayor.
Um, right now, we have a motion and a second on the floor to postpone this to a date certain. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Call for the question.
Let's call the roll and, uh, record the vote.
Are we on the call for the question or on the actual amendment?
Call for the question.
For the table.
For the table. We're, we're calling a roll for the table, correct?
Correct.
I'm asking you, City Manager, um, uh, the amendment on, or what's on the floor right now is that it's table, do a date certain, that's what I want to call the roll on.
Mr. Mayor, um, when it comes to call for the question, technically, there is supposed to be a motion to see if indeed a call for the question is appropriate. Uh, otherwise, the chair can entertain additional discussion, which, on the floor at this point in time, certainly would be the amendment. But, uh, a, a call for the question doesn't necessarily mean that everything stops immediately and, uh, and, uh, goes to the question at hand unless council feels that that's appropriate to do so by a, a vote along those lines.
So, so the point that we're at is it's tabled, I don't think we have any further discussion on it, so we can move to call the roll and record the roll on the table. on it, so we can move to call the roll and record the roll on the table of tabling it to a date certain, correct? Okay, so let's do that.
Councilman Kathy.
Nay.
Councilman Powell.
Nay.
Councilman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco.
Nay.
Councilman Huber.
Nay.
Councilman Johnson.
Nay.
Councilman Hopkins.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye.
Mayor Freel.
Nay.
With Vice Mayor Lutz and Councilman Bates voting aye, motion to amend fails.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, pardon.
All right, so now with that motion to table taken care of, now it brings us back to any further discussion, correct, Mr. Manager? Okay, so back to any further discussion on second reading of this ordinance? Councilman Huber.
Just a couple of points. There have been several people that have said that the Wyoming Landlord Tenant Act already covers all of these aspects. If the landlord, if the current Landlord Tenant Act already was an adequate remedy for these things, we would not be here discussing this. The only remedy that an aggrieved tenant has under the Wyoming Landlord Tenant Act is to move out. And that's a rather hollow remedy for some of these folks that, as everyone recognizes, don't have a lot of options always on the table. And I would further note that, you know, if the current Landlord Tenant Act was doing the job, I don't think that we'd have people like the Housing Authority in here supporting this and things like that. I do want to come back to the safeguards for your constitutional rights, the Fourth Amendment and the Wyoming Constitution about being safe and secure from unreasonable searches. If there is one gentleman who said that, well, we all know that they're going to come in or they're going to come in, and so you might as well just let them in. Well, if that's the case, then I don't think that our founding fathers would have wasted the time and effort in drafting the Fourth Amendment and saying that, no, they have to go to court and get a warrant supported by probable cause. You know, that's the way that our system works, that's the way that this would work under the building code that we currently have enacted, which this becomes a part of. And it's very important that people realize that that safeguard is already in our city ordinances, it's already in the United States Constitution, and in the state constitution, and there's nothing that a city ordinance can do to change that. And so that's, that's, that's the law of the land, and it's very important. And it's not going to be changed by any ordinance that this council does or does not pass.
Any further discussion? Any amendments? Vice Mayor Lutz.
All right, I'm going to do my best here. I'm going to need some help with the wording, but I would like it, I would propose or move that we amend it to only have to do with like functionality of the home, like plumbing, heating, cooling, versus things along the lines of like hoarding, cleanliness, et cetera.
All right, so there's amendment on the table by Vice Mayor Lutz that would deal with just the functionality of a home, not necessarily hoarding and things of this sort. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bates. Any discussion?
Before we start putting all of that, I guess my question would be maybe City Manager and maybe City Staff. And I know we're going down a rabbit hole here when we're amending things, but I think before we start dismantling parts that were put together by City Staff and the attorney, I guess I'd want to hear that amendment that's being proposed by the Vice Mayor, is that needed? Is that something, I guess, if we want to throw that out there?
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Pacheco, having heard this for the first time now, I'm not totally sure exactly what would be amended or changed or whatever. But what I would suggest is that the thing that is critical with regard to some of these matters is specifically with regard to egress and being able to get out of a house because of the cleanliness issues that might prevent that kind of thing. If indeed that's what we're talking about, then I would caution council that a big part of this, safety aspect that this ordinance is designed around, is in fact people being able to get out the door when in fact something cataclysmic is happening in the home. And so that's the only caution I would have. Again, not totally understanding perhaps what the intent of the amendment is, I may be off base, but that's my first blush of what might be at fault here.
Okay, Councilman Huber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I understand in general what Vice Mayor Lutz is wanting to do here, but the problem is that that amendment, I would have to respectfully say is not in order because she would have to state which sections of this proposed ordinance she is proposing to amend and how. You kind of can't just make a blanket statement like what was made. You know, for instance, are you seeking to strike out the section that talks about inadequate means of egress or those kind of things? That, you know, I think that amendment would have to be much more specific than it is. And I think that actually, Mr. Mayor, what might clarify things and move the discussion along would be if you were to rule as the, as the chair of the meeting, rule that that amendment's out of order and then allow Vice Mayor Lutz to more particularly state her amendment.
Okay, and I'll so do that. So Vice Mayor Lutz, it looks like I might have lost you off the screen, but if you can still hear me, that is out of order, and if you could be more specific as to which portion of the ordinance you are wanting to change or amend.
Sorry, I'm looking. I'll just wait for the third reading. At this point, I withdraw my amendment.
Vice Mayor Lutz is withdrawing the amendment. Councilman Hopkins. Councilman Hopkins, I need you to unmute yourself.
I think I'm turned on. I shouldn't say that, that was a terrible word. I think I'm on the mic. I see that shot. This is really a difficult ordinance. We've got, we've got issues with, we have a shared fence with neighbors, and the fence is falling over, and you don't even know when this fence was put up, probably 30 years ago. So who is going to make this fence be built again? Is it the guy that owned this house 30 years ago beside me? And he's a gone Johnson, and it's like his lawn is full of goat heads, and those goat heads will not allow you to ride your bicycle across our yard because it will puncture your bicycle tire. And so it gets, it's more than just a structural building. If the building needs to be taken down, it needs to be taken down. But it's a good neighbor policy, and I don't know a way to write a good neighbor policy other than talk to Mr. Rogers, and he would be glad to write us one. But we have to look at this as a good neighbor policy, and that's what we're looking for. It's good neighbors, and people have to be responsible for what they do. And I'm going to put down my steps and get off my soapbox. Thank you. Bye.
All right, any other amendments? Okay, with no further amendments or no amendments, please call the roll and record the vote.
Councilman Kathy.
Aye.
Councilman Powell.
Aye.
Councilman Bates.
Nay.
Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye, for now.
Mayor Freel.
Aye.
With Councilman Bates voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change of lots 344 and 345, Kenwood Addition subdivision in the city of Casper, Wyoming.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read.
Still moved.
Moved by Councilman Huber, second by, second by Councilman Bates. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes, no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Public comment phone number is 307-235-7568. City Clerk Tremmel, do we have any calls?
Your Honor, we do not.
Okay, any discussion? Please call the roll and record the vote.
Councilman Kathy.
Aye.
Councilman Powell.
Aye.
Councilman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye.
Mayor Freel.
Aye.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving the Gorgon Hills Addition subdivision agreement in a vacation and reflet creating Gorgon Hills Addition comprising 31.52 acres, more or less.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read.
Still moved.
Aye.
Moved by Councilman Bates, second by Councilman Hopkins. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes, no duplications of speakers will be allowed. Public comment phone number is 307-235-7568. City Clerk Tremmel, do we have any calls?
We do have one caller. I'm going to join them to the call. One moment.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Morgan. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This is Jesse Morgan, the partner in Gorgon LLC, speaking on their behalf. It's located at 3630 Irvine. I'm just calling in support of this plat, and I appreciate you all passing that on the last reading, and I appreciate all your time tonight. You know, I can only remember a handful of meetings that have lasted this long, and it's kind of a whole new world online, having meetings like this. So I appreciate everything that you all are doing. And with that, I'll just get started. I'd like to just address some of those that had called in in opposition of this particular plat, and then also address some of the concerns that council had pointed out in the previous reading. And, you know, there was a notion out there that if council were to grant an exception to a cross street, that you'd have to do that, you know, to any developer moving forward. And I'd just like to remind everybody that the city council isn't a rubber stamp, and they take each individual appeal to planning and zoning or variation to any sort of municipal code on a case-by-case basis. And anybody that can look at this property and look at the surrounding area, it's a one-of-a-kind. So I'd like to just point that out. And I would hope that if tonight, perhaps, there's an amendment to take the cross street out, that other developers might see this as an opportunity, or perhaps city council look at vacant land or future land use for property that might be sold in the future as an opportunity to look at, you know, why that property isn't being developed, why it's vacant, and why those stakeholders in our community are choosing to go elsewhere to set up shop and set up businesses. So I hope that you see this as an unnecessary burden. And I'd like to kind of just dive into our long-term comprehensive plan that we have for the city of Casper, which really makes the case for my development and shouldn't require a cross street. So I'll just start with the comprehensive plan in the introduction phase on page seven, which is quoting here, "A focus on reducing infrastructure, urban sprawl, and long-term maintenance costs and impacts to city services through managed growth." And then it goes on to talk about urban growth boundary, which is something that I'll be talking about later on. I did drop off a couple of maps, and if I could maybe have you focus your attention on perhaps the blue one. It's in large part blue. So not that particular one, but the next one, if possible, if you're able to put that on the screen, and then we'll get back to that one. Thank you. So what you have here is basically the areas of growth that's identified throughout the city of Casper, but also throughout the county. And through that, you also have a black dotted line that goes around there, and that's what's considered your urban growth boundaries. And you have these kind of hot pockets or areas on the map that are orange and bordered yellow. That's the areas of growth, which the Planning Department with the city of Casper, in addition to consultants, identified as key areas that might be areas of future development. Now, if you notice that small area that is the land that me and my friend own, that's not highlighted in that orange on the other map. So this area is basically, as far as it's planned to go through our long-term plan, it's not going to go anywhere. And then with the current future land use map, you have a yellow shade on there, and then what that shade represents is a neighborhood one. And what a neighborhood one is, is large parcels of land that goes anywhere between a half acre to larger than four acres. So in this case, there are two acre lots, all the way up to 10 acre lots. And then, sorry, if I could just flip to a page that talks more about a neighborhood one. And so the future land use plan is to further promote the strong Western values, small-town feel and individualistic areas. So while low-density, and this certainly is on the edge, if not fringe, of the community where there's not going to be any additional growth. So putting in a cross street doesn't allow another area in which people could access the land. It is quite literally a road leading to nowhere. And if you look at the boundaries of where we are saying the growth is, it's outside of that boundary. So I think if you added a cross street, it goes against the comprehensive plan that we already have in place and puts an unnecessary burden on me for reasons that I can't find because it doesn't match what we already have in place. And with that, again, I would like to just point out that the topography of the land certainly is difficult, and with that, it's a low-density area, so there's only six lots going to be here as approved thus far. And I wouldn't see council approving any additional cul-de-sacs in any neighborhood if your concern is... And I wouldn't see council approving any additional cul-de-sacs in any neighborhood if your concern is an additional egress for a cul-de-sac because this cul-de-sac is only going to have six homes along this. So with that, I would just respectfully ask that you please put forward an amendment and approve that amendment to remove a cross street as it's an unnecessary burden that kind of goes against our long-term comprehensive plan and also isn't on the major streets plan either.
Okay, questions from council? Councilman Hopkins. Councilman Hopkins, please unmute your...
Uh, I, yeah, I just got back online. For my counsel Morgan, I really appreciate your presentation, and I think, are you guys hearing me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I think your building plans look pretty good, but that is really a challenging piece of ground to build on. And I wonder if you might consent to putting a right-of-way in at pretty much the north end of your property, put like a twenty-foot right-of-way so people could access the state land if and when there is a time when the state land is sold to a developer. So the right-of-way remains there, and if and when the land is sold to a developer, that would allow these folks that are talking about not getting access, just put a twenty-foot right-of-way if and when the land is sold from the state to a developer. I don't think that's likely in our lifetime, but that would maybe solve the whole issue. And quite honestly, I believe from the elevations I've seen that that would be a very least costly arrangement just to make what an effect is an alley along the back of their fence line. And that way they could go run their dogs out there and, you know, it would just make the issue go away. Other than that, I still support your development because it makes no sense to run a street up a fifteen percent grade to get access to a state land. So, your comments, sir. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Councilman Hopkins. And Mr. Mayor, if I could just quickly respond to that. You know, if you ever needed a crystal ball, I think this is the perfect opportunity to kind of look to see what the future of that land is. You know, me reaching out to the state and having that individual that oversees state land come back and say, since before nineteen eighty-nine that this land has been grazed upon by two ranchers in the area, kind of shows you where this is going and what the possibilities are. So in the biggest boom of our economy in perhaps two thousand fourteen and two thousand thirteen, we still didn't see any growth along that line, and it's still outside of our urban growth line. So to say that it's going to be developed, I would be strongly kind of against that. When it comes to an easement, you know, there's a four-foot barbed wire fence that borders my land and state land. And, you know, when people are talking about walking their dogs and things like that, they're primarily talking about walking their dogs on my state land, or on my land, not state land. I haven't seen anybody walk on state land yet. You might see a couple of hunters in the fall. But other than that, I mean, I think the primary thing here is people just want to trespass on my land, and that's why there's a footpath and a two-track. And people were kind of used to that, but for the last three years, it's been in private hands, and people have been trespassing, I guess, at their own discretion since, you know, that time.
Any other ques... any other questions for Mr. Morgan? Okay, thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you.
Your honor, I have Mr. Justin Hackett on the line.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hackett, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Justin Hackett on the forty-four forty-one Moose over here in Wolf Creek. So I guess my comments in regard to the development of this property, I understand in listening to Mr. Morgan's phone call earlier, I get that he feels that he has good reason to believe that there's going to be no more growth or other properties attaching to this property. And so based on that, he would like to do away with any kind of cross streets. My problem with that is, you know, regardless of who the developer is of that piece of land, it is within the city. And so because it's within the city, it should be built, you know, anything that's built on it should meet city code. And, you know, we have Moose Street that runs down there two thousand feet. That's a two-thousand-foot long stretch. And by municipal code, the maximum block length should be seven hundred and fifty feet. So every seven hundred and fifty feet, we should have a cross street. So, and there's good reason for that when you're building in the city limits. These are very, very large lots. This is a big chunk of land. And who's going to be responding to a structure fire or home fire on this property? Well, it's going to be city fire. So they have to respond and drive trucks on, you know, access streets rated for fire trucks. It has to be paved street, concrete. So if you have a structure on the backside of one of these lots, they have to respond to it. And that's why we have city code, you know, that we build to in the first place. It'd be kind of like if I looked at the technology available today, and I gathered all this information, and I said, you know, I want to build a school, but the trend I see in fire detection and life safety is, you know, in five years, they're going to do away with water, you know, sprinkler systems, and they're going to have new tech for smoke detectors. So I'd like to build this school, but I'd like to do away with the fire alarm system in it because there's not going to be any need for those, you know, in the future. So, you know, this property, they should have cross streets every hundred and fifty, seven hundred and fifty feet, or you guys are going to have to give them a relief on that. They, you know, and the cross streets, you can't have dead-end streets no more than six hundred foot. And so even if you had cross streets, you'd have to, you'd have to, those cross streets would be longer than six hundred feet in length, and you can't have a cross street longer than six hundred feet. So they'd have to put a connecting street on the west side. So I guess, I guess what I'm seeing is they came forward with a proposal to develop on a difficult, large piece of land, but they don't want to do it to the municipal guidelines, the city code. And I think, you know, just to strike not one, you know, to not get, you're not given relief on just one or two items. You know, it's a whole slew of items. You have to throw out the window and basically develop like you're developing in the county, but you're not. You're in the city. And to assume that there's not going to be a need for other developments to connect to this, you know, I don't think that, I don't think you can present a design based on what you think the future holds. You have to present a design that meets current code and standards. And that's kind of my take on it. I'd like to see whatever's built out there be built to city municipal code for cross streets, block length, fire hydrant spacing. You know, the fire flow that is going to be needed to any structure fire, and all that has to be taken into account. And I don't, just because it's zoned urban agriculture, you can't toss all that stuff out the window because codes are for a good reason. They involve life safety. They involve how the fire department's going to respond here, how, you know, an ambulance is going to get to somebody's home. And I'd like whatever is developed out there to be, to, you know, because what it looks like now, if you have no cross streets in these lots out there the way they are with, the way that they are proposing, Moose Street looks like a two-thousand-foot-long, city-maintained, private driveway, you know. You drive, you're going to have traffic going down Moose, two-thousand-foot to a dead-end cul-de-sac. And I, you know, I don't think, I would be hard-pressed to know how you could justify allowing that, that kind of design to be accepted. So, you know, I'd just like them to do it to code without any variances. And that's my take.
Okay, any questions from council of Mr. Hackett? Okay, thank you, sir.
You bet. Thanks, guys.
Your honor, I have Mr. Bill Burkett on the line.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Burkett. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like I said, Bill Burkett, forty-six ten Puma Drive. Just like to thank you and the council members for the opportunity to speak this evening. First off, as I stated previously, I would like to thank the landowners for currently allowing the public to walk on their land. My wife Lisa and I have lived in Wolf Creek for almost thirty years. My main concern is safety. This is why I believe the new development should be built under the same municipal code that all of the other developers have been required to abide by in recent years. This would require three cross streets to be built running east to west off of Moose Street. I work for electrical contractors who build everything from powerhouses to residential projects. One thing that all of these contractors have in common is they are required to follow the National Electrical Code. The current National Electrical Code is the twenty-twenty code. The National Electrical Code is changed every three years as determined by the code panel and has to be upheld by all electrical contractors. The reason they are required to abide by this code is for safety. Safety is of the occupants and the general public. If a contractor doesn't want to follow the code, then they are not allowed to build a project. Business and landowners are not allowed to cut costs by telling electrical contractors to just not follow the code and to save money. I feel the developers of the Gorgon Hills project should be required to follow the municipal code, just like all of the developers have been required to in the city of Casper, even if this is expensive. The three cross streets running east to west off of Moose Street would give our neighborhood and future neighborhoods the safety that the municipal code was created for. Without the cross streets, emergency vehicles such as fire trucks, ambulance, and police cars could not access this new development. Since living in Wolf Creek, I have personally seen two significant fires caused by lightning on that property. Without access from emergency vehicles, this not only endangers the landowners of that property, but the entire neighborhood. Another safety concern is the easement road that the developers proposing to use. After living here for almost thirty years, I know where the snowdrifts in our neighborhood are. The easement road is not a viable road for passage in the winter. It is totally drifted in with several feet of snow. Moose Street also has drifting issues that make it impassable. Without cross streets that are maintained by the city, Gorgon Hills will be a dangerous place to live, not only for the landowners, but also for those in the neighborhood. Therefore, in the interest of safety of the occupants and the surrounding community, I would ask that you require the developer to build three cross streets that would run east to west, connecting with the state land, meeting the requirements of the municipal code. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, I have a Mr. Eric Lawrence on the line.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence, go ahead.
Hi, this is Dr. Eric Lawrence. I live at thirty-seven ten West Forty-Sixth Street, and my stance on this topic is in opposition to the replat of this land. As a small business owner of several businesses in town that services and purchases goods locally, I don't really have any interest in my tax dollars going towards the city building and maintaining essentially an exclusive road for a home development, and at the same time dropping my property values. Just listening to the last city council meeting, it seems that there is interest in our property values, and so I feel like this would affect mine as I live very close to this property. And when I bought my home here, that land was city property. I wanted to live as close to the public land access as possible and still be in this wonderful Wolf Creek neighborhood with excellent schools for my kids. So, and we use that area to, we would use that area to easily access that public land in the past, too. There's an opening there in that fence, so it's been easy to go back there and forth to ride bikes and shoot BB guns. And I know Mr. Morgan had mentioned that he doesn't see anyone but some hunters on his state land. I'm not sure how much time he spends back there. This last weekend, we were back there shooting BB guns. You could see mountain bikers back there. There were ATVs going through that public land as well, too. So it's, I think it's readily used by the public, and that's why I think that having that access through there would be reasonable. So, yeah, the access to the public land now, right now, is through Whitney Street to the north. It's built from this Moose Street area that's about six blocks away and about the same distance as if I walked to Wolf Creek. But just to be able to have a closer access to that was a big selling point of this, my home where I live right now. And I know it would detract from that if we didn't have the ability to access that public land. And so I feel that would diminish our property values by losing the access to the public recreation land that we enjoy using. And, but also, in regards to his request to forgive Mr. Morgan from putting in a cross street, I know if the city is in favor of the replat, then I would be in favor of a cross street put in place per city code. If the city were to maintain the cross street access, then from my perspective, it would be feasible to allow the cost of the road rebuild and maintenance, but with easy public access and still to help maintain our property values. As I mentioned earlier, when we purchased our home, one of the best features was its access to the public land, including the city property that was there when we had moved here. When the land had sold, we had no idea. had sold, we had no idea that it changed hands or even that it was up for sale. Um, I don't have time to read the paper regularly or, uh, for city lands being sold, and I never did recall seeing a for sale sign up on the property to notify those around that it was for sale. Um, so, like I got worked when the no trespassing signs started going up and I found out, uh, that it had been sold by the city. But now, at least have an opportunity to speak up as the property, um, as this property starts to develop, only because I was required to receive a letter from the city for the replat, which I'm glad that you did send that out. Um, so, part of my opposition is set on the undertones of the original sale of the land by the city. Um, so, um, even though I know nothing can be done about that now to reverse it, but, uh, I just, uh, ask that you, uh, respect our property values and, um, also maintain the easy access to public land. That's essentially my comment, and I'll entertain any questions.
Okay. Any questions of the caller? Okay. Thank you, sir. No questions.
Great. Thank you. All right. Please hit done.
Thank you.
Your honor, I have Mr. Jim Brunet on the line.
Okay. Mr. Brunet, go ahead.
Okay. Um, well, my name is Jim Brunet. I'm on 3630 West 46th. Um, after further review of the new information, uh, including news articles and conversations with concerned neighbors, I, I have a few more comments concerning the proposed Gorgon Hills development. Uh, dead end streets and cul-de-sacs are bad ideas as they impose greater safety risks to their own residents. Long blocks with no cross streets are also a bad idea and violate city code. Yet, these are the plans we are being asked to accept by Mr. Morgan and his partner. City code indicates that create three cross streets should be built. I said in my unprepared comments last meeting that the roads are not feasible but necessary, and at least one should be built. Casper has many steep streets, such as those in the hilltop area, and the city planner confirmed that they would be within the allowable grade of 15 percent. So, they are indeed feasible. Uh, the amendment to do away with all cross streets, uh, was narrowly rejected by the council in the last meeting. I was originally okay with building only one, excuse me, but now I feel that no exceptions to the code should be allowed. No other contractor has asked for or been granted these types of allowances, and that's likely the reason few others were interested in this property. Given its, uh, isolated location and rather steep terrain adjacent to Moose Road, the expense to do it right is clearly prohibitive, and that should have been a strong consideration before the property was purchased. There are safety concerns with only one way into the property. As I said in my previous letter, snowdrifts are a huge issue in Wolf Creek every winter. Eagle Drive is bad, but there is no place in Wolf Creek worse than the intersection of 46th and Moose where I live, and it's presently the only way into Gorgon Hills. Whiteout conditions are frequent here. Uh, the city usually takes days to get up here to plow lanes through the drifts, and often has machinery get stuck in the process. It takes over a week for them to remove the berm left in the center of the street. Uh, the berm's usually three to five feet tall, so you have to be lucky and creative just to get out of your driveway. The drift on the south side of the intersection, uh, to Gorgon Hills is commonly over 10 feet tall, and it's there all winter. Dripped snow is not light and fluffy. It's hard packed. In fact, uh, it's what igloo's are made of. Uh, one year, a portion of my fence was broken during plowing due to this phenomenon. The city replaced it, but I had to repaint it. Uh, and even with doors closed tight, I get snowdrifts in my garage and entryway every year. Uh, countless folks have been stuck in front of my house over the years, uh, with many asking if they can borrow a shovel. Some were blocking my way out, so I've helped dig out more cars and trucks than I can accurately count, uh, because the city's busy elsewhere. Winds over 50 miles an hour are common in this area, and it's hard to imagine if you haven't been through it, uh, but helping dig someone out in winds like that is an adventure. For over 20 years, I've had the luxury of working from home, so I'm prepared for the numerous days when I can't get out of my driveway. Fire hydrants are sometimes buried in the event of fire. We're at much higher risk as large emergency vehicles cannot always get to my part of the neighborhood, especially along Bobcat, uh, where nearly every house has vehicles parked in the street, making passage and snow removal even more difficult. Uh, so develop any, to, to develop anything south of Wolf Creek is asking for trouble as it will require additional efforts on the part of the city to clear drifts in a timely manner. I personally doubt Mr. Morgan and his partner have plans to live on lots five and six and make it their forever homes. It appears only as a poorly proposed development platted for minimal costs to provide greater profit. If I'm wrong, I can assure them or anyone else who lives up there, they will likely regret their decisions every winter. Okay. I called last time because, and I still am, a little fired up by comments made by a councilman that if we don't like it, we can move. That felt a little like being thrown to the ground and having my neck stepped on. I consider myself to be a good guy, but since Obama was elected, I've figuratively been thrown to the ground, had my neck stepped on professionally, personally, and now it appears domestically. Uh, this doesn't settle well with me because for nearly 20 years, I have considered this to be my forever home. The mayor recused himself from voting on this issue last meeting, suggesting to me at least that we're only seeing the tip of the iceberg. The chain of events on how this property was obtained is fishy, and now the mayor having possible interest in the area is disturbing in the extreme. My preference would be to put the concrete barriers back up and forget the whole issue, but that ain't likely to happen. In closing, unless the city insists on doing it right, I strongly oppose this development altogether. Uh, in case the newspaper wishes to quote me again, my name is Brunet, like the hair color, not the comedian. Thank you again for your time. Hoping up you do the right thing for the citizens of Casper and Wolf Creek and reject this proposed undertaking in its entirety and consider other more viable options. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions from counsel? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Go ahead.
Yes. Good evening. Um, I live at 4511 Moose, and I access state land for hiking purposes quite frequently. Um, I would like to support fellow citizens in saying that it is just that all developers should be held to the same requirements for the safety and welfare of all citizens. I'm speaking specifically of the requirement for cross streets in the proposed development, um, every 750 feet. I would also offer that any comprehensive city plan should never negate the health and welfare of its citizens nor the integrity of the council. Mr. Morgan seems to be addressing only his desires and plans as a non-resident to develop without considering the ramifications of his desires and negative effects on residents. I'm sorry, but we can't help that the expense is a burden for Mr. Morgan. Just as the city council is concerned with protecting tenants and renters, um, in a previous, previous discussion, I would hope that council members are concerned for the safety and welfare of citizens in this case. Um, with all due respect, I know that we are not out of line in, in, uh, regards to asking for state access, other than the fact that, um, I know it's not a requirement for a private owner to give such access, but a developer in Laramie, Wyoming, um, quote, went back to the drawing board here just recently and provided more than 13.6 acres of open space and physical improvements such as trails, trees, irrigation, and pathways for a rather large plot of land. Under these circumstances, um, we're asking for access to state land via a walkway or via regulation cross street. The people of Casper have long touted the cross-country, uh, ski trail system of Casper Mountain. Maybe, um, Gorgon LLC could give them the same bragging right to a brief trail system on the southwest side of Casper leading to public land. It may open connectivity with even the trail system over at Squaw Creek at some time in the future. Thank you for your time.
Any questions of, uh, Ms. Rogers? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time. We have no other callers.
Okay. So, with no other callers, we'll move on to discussion. Any discussion? Uh, Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I guess I'll get this started. Um, and, uh, I guess I'd, I'd like to point out that, uh, Mr. Morgan did request the annexation, um, so that, uh, he would have, uh, more freedom to develop the property the way he chose. So, he has, he has, uh, you know, made attempts to, uh, uh, take care of this problem in a different manner, but, uh, uh, but we still have the, um, the current plat approved by Planning and Zoning Commission that requires a single cross street in front of us. And so, um, as the caller pointed out, elimination of that cross street was failed on a 4-4 vote. And so, um, I've heard these concerns about safety and consistency. Um, I think, I think the, um, the, the property, the way it is laid out, I still am not convinced these cross streets really make any sense or serve any useful purpose. Um, so I'm, I'm not convinced that that should be required. Uh, it makes no sense to offer the same amount amendment on second reading that failed on first reading unless another member of council has changed their mind. So, if anyone, if any one of you have changed, any one of you who voted, um, against the amendment to remove the cross streets, uh, has changed your mind and thinks it's not necessary to have any cross streets, uh, I'd like to hear that, that person, um, say so, in which case it would make sense to entertain that amendment again. Otherwise, I think it would just make, make sense to move forward on whether we approve the plat as it was proposed to us. If, if that all made sense. Thank you.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Councilman Powell. I, I, uh, you know, I, I've walked that ground several times since this has come up, and a cross street literally makes no sense. It, it, you know, I hate to say this. I know it's a, a bit of a cliche, but it would be a street to nowhere. Uh, until such time that it was subdivided later to put more houses up there. It just makes no sense. It, the price, uh, I don't remember. I, I, I deal in cubic yards and not in dollars, but, uh, my, my life was cubic yards, a lot of yards at once, but, uh, there's no way making a street going east and west to hook that up makes a great deal of sense. The other thing I might offer, uh, is that, um, this could have easily been developed as a PUD, and a PUD does not have the same requirement for cross streets that we do within city developments. And a PUD would clearly never have had a cross street. This would be similar to the McMurray Business Park out there. Well, it's flat as a board. Uh, they have streets pretty much wherever they want them, and they get people off of the main streets for traffic. Well, we're going to have like five or six houses here, so how much traffic are going to have? And I know these people like to look out in their backyards and see, uh, Prairie, and to the left of it, they can see state land. But there is access two blocks over. If they want to walk over two blocks and get access to that state land, it's there. All you've got to do is walk down the street that's not developed. You might have to walk on dirt, but it's not developed, and people can do that. This is just, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, it's smoke and mirrors. Uh, our, our ex-city councilman has done nothing wrong here, and I know there's implications in newspapers and whatever out there that something transpired that was illegal and immoral. That is just not true. There was seven months that transpired before, uh, Mr. Morgan and his partner bought this property, and he was not on council during those seven.
Councilman Hopkins, uh, just point of order. We're discussing the, the, um, land itself. Nothing more.
Okay. I'm in. I'm done. Thanks. Bye.
Councilman Bates.
Thank you. Uh, last Friday, I actually talked to Jesse Morgan and, uh, uh, got permission to go on his land, walk it. While I was walking it, I actually, uh, was talking to him and going through the layout, um, regarding it. Uh, it keeps, uh, and then I also went back and watched part of the planning and zoning discussion regarding this, and, um, it keeps being talked about a 15 percent grade, but my understanding it's only an 8 percent grade. Um, I'm, I don't know that well enough, but that's what I heard in the video, um, that was discussed. I know that also, um, the road that was referred to to walk down the block, uh, walk on the dirt in access the land, that's actually owned by, uh, Roland Hills Estate. So, for them to actually walk on that, they're walking on private property as well. Um, but I do know that Roland Estate has that all lined out for future, uh, housing development and anything else which is connect, connected to the state land. So, it's just kind of kidney corner from, uh, uh, the George property. So, to say that that state land will not be developed in many, many years from now, we can't say that. Um, the fact that Jesse Morgan and his partner did ask for it to be, uh, city, uh, be in the county instead of the city, and we said no, we're going to keep it, uh, within the city. So, um, I do have to agree with everybody that spoke prior. It's city property. It needs to follow city codes. Um, I don't disagree with them about the three streets on it, to be honest with you. Um, we would require that with other development, uh, developers. So, I think we need to honor that and do that. Um, as far as it's too big of a grade to put a street in, um, look at Good Stee. If anybody's ever drove up Good Stee and back there and looked at the driveways, it's, it's just as steep as this. So, to say that this cannot be done, that's not true. If you go, uh, Mike Cedar Park and you take a left, if you were headed northbound, uh, and you go up, uh, westbound on by Mike Cedar Park, some of the driveways up there are really steep as well, just as steep as this, if not maybe even steeper. So, we have that all around Casper. So, um, and then I know that with putting this in, there's the different, as they brought up, uh, fire hydrants are going to have to be dispersed on it before the development can be signed off and a bunch of other stuff. So, to me, we had a lot of people call, say they want access to public land. That's totally separate, but that it should be held to the city's standard, to city code, because it is in the city. is in the city. I believe we, as council, needs to honor that, and I am not opposed to actually doing amendment of adding the other two streets that should be in there. So, that's where I stand, uh, as far as that goes.
Councilman Huber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, at our last meeting, I, uh, moved to amend to delete this. I still think that, uh, this is a street from nowhere to nowhere. Uh, I am all about having multiple means of ingress and egress in and out of subdivisions, but there's, uh, there's a proposition in the law that's known as the defense of necessity. And that, for instance, would be that when you, uh, you know, you can't put a street that goes over a cliff, uh, you can't, you know, sometimes there're topographical issues that just simply make a cross street impractical. I think about Kaufman Street from south of, from Granada on up to Thirty-Ninth. That's a pretty darn long run there with no cross streets. Well, there's no place where you could make a cross street go there because you got Garden Creek down there to the, uh, uh, you know, to the west of there. You go down there in Valley Hills, there's a, there's a cross street that was put in there back in the 1960s because cross streets were required, and by golly, that's cross streets there, it goes less than, it goes one, one, uh, lot deep and dead ends into Garden Creek. That developer was made to put that in because that was a requirement back then, didn't they? You know, it's a street that doesn't go anywhere, doesn't provide any safe ingress or egress or anything else. Uh, it's, and there, you can go all around town and find streets that run, you know, go, go up or down McKinley Street, and, uh, they're across from Washington Park. You know, there are streets that can't climb that hill there east of Washington Park. Uh, you know, for all of those reasons, I, I just, uh, I don't see any reason to have And, uh, as far as the safety arguments, the only way that this would provide safety in terms of, uh, secondary ingress or egress would be if you then looped on around through, uh, the private land to the west or through the state lands to the east. That's not there and not really happening. And how steep driveways might be off of some other streets, that's a different issue than how steep a street would be required to be. And so I don't think that saying that, well, because there's a driveway that goes straight up and down, and someone was, uh, for whatever reason wanted to have a driveway that went straight up a steep hill, that's, that's a different thing than saying, well, okay, we're gonna make these guys put in a street. And so, uh, I still stand by the proposition that we should amend this and delete that, and, uh, would renew that motion at the appropriate time.
Okay, any other discussion? Vice Mayor Lutz.
All right, we don't need to say the same thing 100, 150 times, but, so, a big reason why I was opposed to it initially was obviously the safety concern and the safety discussion of ingress and egress, and after looking back at the maps for myself and actually sitting down and going through them, that road doesn't provide a secondary ingress/egress. It would literally just be a sub-road off of Moose Road, which is still going to be the only point of ingress or egress, and it would just be like a little side road. It's not going to provide any safety. And so I actually will, if somebody would propose the amendment, I will be changing my response.
Any other discussion? All right, the only thing that I have to add to any of this is that I'm gonna go on the record and tell people, just like I do in every development that happens, is that I work in the real estate industry, and I am not going to vote on developments because I don't have a crystal ball. I have absolutely zero interest in this right now. Doesn't mean I'm not gonna sell pieces of property in the future, so because of that, again, I will abstain from this, just like I will any other development. If there's no other further discussion, then we'll move on to amendments. Is there any amendments that want to be made? Councilman Huber.
I would renew my motion to amend to delete the requirement of the cross street, uh, east-west off of Moose.
Councilman Huber has moved to delete a cross street. Uh, do I have a second? Second by Councilman Hopkins. Please take the roll and record the vote.
Councilman Kathy.
Nay.
Councilman Powell.
Aye.
Councilman Bates.
Nay.
Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye.
Mayor Frill's going to say. Uh, with council members Kathy and Bates voting nay, motion to amend passed.
All right, we'll go back to discussion. Okay, then, uh, could we take the roll and record the vote on the amended ordinance?
Councilman Kathy. Pardon, you were in, in favor?
I think he said nay.
Negative.
Thank you, thank you. Councilman Powell.
Aye.
Councilman Bates.
Nay.
Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye.
And Mayor Abstain.
Abstain.
So with council members Kathy and Bates voting nay, motion as amended on second reading
Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 9A1, the lease of buildings to the Casper Area Transportation Coalition, known as CATSI. Item 9A2, contract for transit services with CATSI. Item 9A3, the lease of vehicles to CATSI. Item 9A4, the lease amendment number two with the Casper Amateur Hockey Club. Item 9A5, a coronavirus, coronavirus funding grant with the Department of Justice. Item 9A6, a contract with installation and service company for the Casper Event Center Water Service Replacement Project. Item 9A7, a contract with Casper Electric for the Event Center Fire Alarm Replacement Project. Item 9A8, an agreement with Grizzly Excavation for the Lifesteps Parking Lot Improvements. Item 9A9, an agreement with TDS Construction for the Armory Park Bike Lane Connection. Item 9A10, an agreement with Crown Construction for the Second Street Railing Project. And item 9A11, amended promissory note for the Baylor Building Loan with the State Land and Investment Board.
I, uh, then the clerk was probably not aware that I had asked to take the, uh, 9A6 and, uh, 9A8 and, uh, 9 off of consent agenda.
Mr. Manager, would we do that by an amendment, or just take them off?
Mr. Mayor, it would, uh, effectively act like an amendment, uh, in that you would wanna vote on that request of Councilman Huber's, uh, as a separate motion, so to speak.
And I just wanna have some explanation about those.
Yeah, you bet.
So should I not get, um, uh, once we entertain a motion to adopt a consent, and I get a first and a second on that, then do an amendment after that?
That's appropriate, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so the chair would entertain a motion to adopt a consent resolution, just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Huber, seconded by Councilman Bates. Uh, Mr., well, so now at this point, I'll ask for any amendment, or an amendment to be done to the consent resolution.
I would now move to, uh, take those three items off of the consent agenda.
The numbers again, I'm sorry, it was, do you mind telling us the numbers?
The numbers again, Councilman Huber.
I'm sorry.
9A, uh, 6, 8, and 9. The, the same things coincidentally that Mr. Rollins was complaining about earlier.
Okay. So Councilman Huber has made a motion to remove three items off the consent resolution. Do I have a second? Councilman.
Actually, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, hold on a second. Councilman Kathy.
Uh, actually, uh, Mr. Rollins was inter, was interested in 8, 9, and 10.
Okay, um...
That's correct, yeah, I was wrong about number 6. Thank you, Councilman Kathy, yeah, 8, 9, and 10 are the ones.
All right, Councilman Bates, did you have some? Okay, so I need a second on the amendment. Second by Councilman Bates. Any discussion on removing those items? All right. Please take the roll and please record the roll.
Councilman Kathy.
Aye.
Councilman Powell.
Aye.
Councilman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco.
Nay.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye.
Mayor Frill.
Aye.
With council members Pacheco and Hopkins voting nay, motion to remove those items from consent passed.
Mr. City Manager, of the remaining items on there, do you have anything you'd like to comment on?
No, sir.
Okay. Any abstentions or any nay votes? Please call the roll and record the vote.
I'm sorry, I'm not clear what we're...
For the consent list.
For the con...
As it remains, thank you.
As it remains, sir.
Councilman Kathy.
If I understood right, we're voting on the rest of them, but not 8, 9, or 10, is that correct?
That's correct, those three have been removed, so we're voting on the remainder.
I will vote aye.
Councilman Powell.
Aye.
Councilman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye.
Mayor Frill.
Aye.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the consent minute action titles.
Do you wanna deal with the non-consent?
Yeah, we have to go back.
Do what?
The three, we have to discuss those three.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Okay, so, let's go back to the three that have been pulled by Councilman Huber.
Uh, I, I just wanted a little bit of explanation on those three items.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Huber, uh, members of the council. The three items that are under, uh, separate consideration are the, first of all, the Lifesteps Parking Lot, um, that is proposed to be awarded to Grizzly Excavating. Uh, the basic idea behind this project is with regard to what I would consider a rehabilitation of the parking lot and, uh, portions of the flat work that's there as well. Uh, this, this is a parking lot that is in significant disrepair. Uh, it certainly is a portion of our, uh, service area that, um, folks who, you know, are, um, residents there could certainly include those who are, uh, have special needs, uh, particularly from an ADA standpoint. Uh, and so with respect to the, the, uh, the distress of the surface area in question and some of the needs of the residents there, we do believe that it's a higher priority kind of project and, and, uh, kind of rises to the level of getting some, some help in reconstruction.
Councilman Huber.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Maypear, uh, is it, is it accurate to say that if we don't do this repair now, it's gonna cost us more later to do a bigger repair, or, uh, is that inaccurate?
Mr. Mayor, Council Human, uh, excuse me, Councilman Huber, I, I would agree that the longer we let this go, the more distress it's gonna incur, and, uh, you know, the costlier the project will become. Mr. Mayor, I think it's, uh, the council's choice to either decide on this project via motion now, or after you've heard the three, take three separate motions in rapid succession. What would your preference be?
I guess let's take them one at a time, and that way we can...
Perfect.
Stay on task on each one. So, with, uh...
If, if there's no other questions, I would move that we, uh, approve that, uh, number 8.
Is there any further questions on this item? Okay, so it's been moved by Councilman Huber to go ahead and approve that. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Hopkins. Any other further discussion? Okay, if we could, uh, take the roll and record the vote.
Councilman Kathy.
Nay.
Councilman Powell.
Aye.
Councilman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye.
Mayor Frill.
Aye.
With Councilman Kathy voting nay, motion passed.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the second item is with respect to a portion of bike trail being constructed, um, within the city's right-of-way on Armory Park, which is that portion of, uh, uh, ground that previously was the home to the National Guard Armory from a number of years ago. Uh, the reason this project is important to the Trails Trust is indeed that it was identified in their master plan as being a gap in service with respect to, uh, that, that part of the, uh, the trail system, if you will, and, uh, a, a number of months ago indicated to the council that it too is a higher priority, um, gap, uh, project, if you will, uh, pursuant to the number of network gaps that they have throughout the county.
Councilman Huber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this a general fund item, or where's this money gonna come from?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Huber, this would be 1% money that's been allocated to the trust.
And so this is money that's already kind of set aside, dedicated for this type of a project?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Huber, I would agree with that, and I would also suggest that it wouldn't impact any of the fiscal year 21 projects, uh, that the city would sponsor or that you might see come forward from the trust.
So this is money that we would not, that would not otherwise be available to us to spend to make up for other shortfalls that we're gonna be confronting?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Huber, I think in order for that to happen, council would have to, um, uh, decommission the dollars that have been appropriated to the trust, um, in contrast to the agreement that council entered into for this phase of funding, uh, to the trust, in order to reallocate those dollars to other city projects, if you will, in comparison to trust projects.
Okay, any discussion on this item? Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In other words, Mr. City Manager, we would have to go back on our word.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilman Powell, um...
Let me phrase that differently. We committed to the trust that they would have X number of dollars, and they have chosen to prioritize this project with those dollars. The only reason we, the only way we could get those dollars back would... The only reason we could, the only way we could get those dollars back would be if we went back on our word and did not give them the money that we had promised them.
Mi- Mr. Mayor, Councilman Powell, I feel better with that assessment, yep, I would agree.
Councilman Cathy.
Uh, yes, we have spent, I came back on council in August, since that time, we have spent close to, or authorized close to, a million dollars for trails. There is enough, is enough, and I don't care whether we go back on our word or not to a point, we are asking policemen to have furlough days, we are freezing wages, there is a way around that trail right now, and we are in a bit of a crisis and will be dollar-wise, and I do not feel we can keep spending this kind of money on trails at this time. All I'm going to say, you've heard it from me before, thank you.
Councilman Hopkins.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you, uh, Councilman, for your, your feedback here, but the bottom line is either in effect sunk costs. We committed to this a number of years ago, and I don't, I can't tell you the date when we committed to it, but what we're asking the trails people to do is take a lot less over the next few years, and so I, I don't feel too bad about making a commitment to do this with that, uh, thank you.
Councilman Bates.
Uh, thank you, I have two questions, I guess, and maybe I missed it, and I apologize. I- is it a fact that, um, if we said no to this, that they'd lose that money?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bates, um, the, you know, unless council took, um, a course of action similar to what you have done for fiscal year 21, where we have, uh, told them upfront that because of cash flow, we're, we're, we're extending a smaller amount of dollars for their capital needs, et cetera, um, th- they would likely keep their claim on those particular dollars, and, and I'm speaking of the $64,000 that would otherwise be allocated for this project.
Okay, uh, my second question then is, is this time-sensitive then, i- is it, it needs to be done this, like, now, and so they need to use the money, or can we hold off, um, and just kind of see how things go, I guess, is what I'm, uh, wondering.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bates, uh, unlike the previous, uh, project that you discussed and, uh, consistent with Councilman Huber's question, I don't see this project as having an increase in cost because of deteriorating conditions for, you know, uh, existing facilities and that kind of thing, and so in that regard, you know, if the price of concrete goes up, as an example, or asphaltic concrete goes up, then those would be increased costs that might, uh, you know, plea a timeliness case, but otherwise, I, I just don't see a, a timeliness issue with this project.
Okay, so on this item, let's, uh, take the roll and record the vote.
Councilman Cathy.
Nay.
Councilman Powell.
Aye.
Councilman Bates. Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Huber. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Nay.
Mayor Freel.
Nay.
Still passes.
I didn't count.
We have, uh, Councilman Huber, Johnson, Vice Mayor Lutz, and Mayor Freel voting nay, so, four.
And Councilman Cathy.
Oh, Cathy, so, motion to ma- um, pass fails.
Okay, and then our final one, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, the final project here is with regard to, uh, a railing project, uh, this is the railing structure that is, uh, traverses a, a drainage facility on Second Street, it's a, it's a rather long, um, rail system that, uh, as far as we can tell, hasn't been maintained since the time it was installed. Um, while this does not have the safety concerns that we had with respect to the railing project for the Center Street underpass, we do believe that this will provide us some opportunities to do some maintenance on the, on the rail system, uh, as well as recoat the rail system, uh, also. Uh, and so with that, uh, tha- that's why this project had some priority, um, and, uh, proposing for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor. Is, is this, uh, west of Hilltop Shopping Center, over the, what I think's East Dale Draw along there, or?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Huber, I believe that is the case, I think it is west of the Hilltop area, if I remember correctly. It, it's, it's, it's very lengthy, it's one of the more lengthier pieces of railing that we have on the, that would be the north side of Second Street, um, that area.
I think that's the only one that's a drainage there.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Cathy.
Uh, yeah, I drove by there today and basically, uh, it extends from about the, oh, eastern, I'm sorry, the eastern part of Hilltop Shopping Center across past Country Club, oh, maybe another half a block, so it's right there, uh, right there where Country Club ties into Second Street.
Any further discussion on it? Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, this is an extremely high-traffic area, and I, uh, I would really hesitate to walk down that, i- it's not a pleasant walk, uh, in good weather and so forth, but, eh, this railing, I think, is really important, I, I, I know it's money that we're going to spend, but it, it's, what traffic is there, foot traffic, uh, that railing needs to be there, and I think we need to maintain it, thank you.
Councilman Bates.
Uh, and I'm on the opposite side, I would say, out of all three of these, I think this personally is the least one that we need to spend any money on in our current times, um, I, I think this project truly can wait, um, my personal opinion.
Councilman Cathy.
Well, as I stated, I went by there today, and yes, there is some rust showing, but overall, that railing is not in that bad a shape, and, uh, I would have to go along with, uh, Councilman Bates's, uh, statement there, is that I'm not sure, uh, I would be replacing that, or actually, we aren't replacing it, we're going to probably take it off, sandblast it, and either repaint it or powder coat it, uh, but it's not in that bad a shape, uh, it didn't look like as, uh, I went by there, did I?
Councilman Pacheco.
Mr. City Manager, what, what would it cost to, to do that roughly, again?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council Pacheco, um, with respect to the actual project cost and the contingency, uh, and the reason we do have a contingency is because we do suspect that we're going to have some repairs that need to be made to the system, um, we are anticipating a total, uh, not to exceed cost, if you will, of forty-seven-five.
Thank you.
And, and I would tell you, that, that is cash on hand, it's not having to bet on a revenue stream to support it.
Thirty-seven-five or forty-seven-five?
Forty-seven, forty-seven.
Forty-seven?
Yeah, yep.
Mr. City Manager, you feel comfortable within the budget to be able to, to do this, right?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I do, yeah.
I generally concede on a lot of areas that, um, City Manager and his staff that diligently go through the budget, um, uh, I'm not an accountant, um, in that sense, and so I, I tend to, um, rely on their expertise and feel comfortable supporting something like this, and I think we need to be very careful also not picking, um, and choosing when we're looking at these little small numbers here and there, um, of what we need to do, so I'm just going to support this.
Any further discussion? Okay, please take the roll and record the vote.
Councilman Cathy.
Nay.
Councilman Powell.
Nay.
Councilman Bates.
Nay.
Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz. Mayor Freel.
Aye.
With council members Cathy, Powell, Bates, and Lutz voting nay, motion passed.
Okay, now we can move on to consent minute action, so please read the consent minute action titles.
Item 10A1, the discharge of uncollectible accounts receivable balances, item 10A2, authorizing the inclusion of a summary proposed budget in the June 2nd, 2020, regular council meeting minutes.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Bates, seconded by Councilman Cathy. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please call the roll and record the vote.
Councilman Cathy.
Aye.
Councilman Powell.
Councilman Hop- aye.
Councilman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
Aye.
Mayor Freel.
Aye.
Council members voting aye, motion passed.
Okay, at this time, we ask council members to bring forward relevant concerns, uh, or items of interest, so let's start off with, uh, Vice Mayor Lutz.
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Cathy.
Nothing further.
Councilman Bates.
Too late, we're, no.
Councilman Hopkins.
Nothing here, thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
I'm good.
Councilman Powell.
Well, I know that life is slowly returning to normal because I have my first softball games tomorrow night, other than that, nothing.
Councilman Huber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to once again apologize for my language earlier and my, uh, raised voice tone, I was just getting a little bit frustrated about that. I would also like to offer the idea and the thought that as we see many communities around our country suffering, uh, from a, a great deal of violence and everything, the thing that strikes me is that, uh, all life matters, and respect for all life, we should have respect for everyone and for all human life, and, uh, I see that in a variety of ways, I think it's important that in the days, uh, you know, that we're, we're trying to deal with this, uh, virus, uh, being respectful of, uh, you know, not, uh, not contaminating other people is a very important thing, but I just really want to emphasize how much I think that we just need to really, truly be respectful of everyone's life.
Councilman Pacheco.
Nothing tonight.
Okay, the only two things I have to add is, uh, softball did start last night, and so that was a good thing, and I liked the way that it went, it was relatively smooth and I think everybody's happy to be back out on the field, so, um, no, we won't want to talk about that. Um, I do want to.
They won't.
I do want to take, uh, a moment, though, and just, just read a real quick statement to you guys, um, "I'd like to take a, a few moments to address the death of Mr. George Floyd. We are all appalled by this tragic and wrongful death. We too want justice for Mr. Floyd and for everyone culpable to be ha- uh, held accountable. We understand and support those who wish to protest injustice. We honor and appreciate the rights granted by the First Amendment. We also want to ensure that the protests are driving meaningful change, not violence and destruction. We will accommodate anyone's right to free speech. Let's be clear, protesters are not looters and rioters unless they take the additional steps into criminal actions. Protesters are lawfully expressing their objections. Looters and rioters are those who commit violence and destruction and are engaging in criminal, uh, actions. We will absolutely not tolerate looting or violence and destruction. These actions take away from the important message protesters have. I hope we can all come together and listen, stand together against more violence, and work together to improve the community we live in." So with that being said, next meetings of the City Council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 Tuesday, June 9th, 2020, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, with the location of these meetings to be determined. A notice in an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have a matter to dis- to discuss regarding property acquisition, therefore, the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session and at the conclusion of that executive session to reconvene this regular meeting solely for purposes of adjournment of this regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Huber, seconded by Councilman Pacheco. There being a majority of members present and majority to adjourn, or a motion to adjourn into an executive session having been moved in second and that motion requiring a two-thirds majority of the council present, please call the roll and record the vote.
Councilman Cathy. Councilman Powell.
Aye.
Councilman Bates.
Aye.
Councilman Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilman Huber.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
I am tired somebody, nay.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
I saw it on your face, Sean, aye.
Mayor Freel.
Aye.
Councilmember, uh, pardon me, Johnson voting nay, motion passed.
A greater than two-thirds majority of the council will present voted in favor of the motion, we are hereby adjourned into executive session. Council, please stay on the line.